First off, Commissioner Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report this time? Okay, nope. All right, we'll move right along. We actually have a very full agenda today, as all of you know. So Kimberly, Executive Director Branham's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Because it's such a full agenda and because that the main things that I would be able to report are all related to this agenda, I'm going to keep it really short and sweet in terms of my executive director remarks. So one thing that I will note is each of you now have, I actually have a copy. Can I have this? So each of you now have in front of you the state of the Portland economy. This is going to be released on our website next week, and it is the result of a lot of hard work across the Prosper Portland staff, but in particular, our Equity Policy and Communications Team. What is exciting about the state of the Portland economy is that it not only gives you an overview of where Portland is economically in comparison to peer cities, but it actually digs down on a neighborhood by neighborhood level. And so we will be highlighting key findings. It's quite a significant document, and so we will be highlighting key findings through weekly newsletters. So I know you all are signed up for that, but for those who haven't, we would encourage you to sign up and learn more. You can download the full report. We also give an overview of the progress that we've made after the first year of Advanced Portland and provide information on each of the tax increment finance districts. So it's a meaty document, but just want to appreciate the entire Equity Policy and Communications Department for their leadership in putting it together and look forward to having more conversation with the board. If we didn't have such a full agenda, it would have been one of our topics to walk through. So that's one key thing. And then I have three people-related announcements that I want to share. So as you know, one of my favorite things to do is to introduce our fabulous new colleagues and employees. So I'm going to start with congratulating an existing colleague, Terry Morgan, who is taking on a new role in the Asset and Investment Team as our Senior Project Program Specialist in Real Estate. Terry's supported the lending team for 10 years extremely capably and has made so many contributions to help the team and the agency do our work more efficiently, making sure that people who are borrowers are having good experiences, that we're able to track this support. And she also has really pitched in and just with the team on repair and restore grants. She has incredible institutional memory and is really good with technology. So we are very much looking forward to her taking on this new role. She's very focused on process improvements, and this means we get to keep her. She's actually on the same team, just in a different role. So congratulations, Terry. I'm equally excited to introduce a new colleague, Kate Merrill, who is not a stranger to us at all. We worked with her in her previous, some of her previous roles, but she has joined the Business Advancement Team in the Economic Development Department, and she is supporting metals and machinery cluster. As I think many people know, she comes to Prosper Portland with a background in nonprofit management and economic development. She was the first full-time executive director of the Central Eastside Industrial Council at a really, really pivotal time for the city, and she was a huge partner to us both before and during the pandemic. She advocated for businesses in the Central Eastside, led the organization through establishment of Central Eastside together, which was Portland's third enhanced services district, and really took a kind of updated path towards the ESDs. And for the past two years, she's managed the standards, national, and regional philanthropy as Senior Community Relations and Communications Manager. She's a third-generation Oregonian, and she's really passionate about helping the region grow sustainably and equitably. So we are delighted to have Kate on the team. And then this might be my least favorite part, which is saying goodbye to our beloved colleagues, but I want to recognize Kevin Johnson, who's hiding in the back, back there. But Kevin Johnson is retiring from Prosper Portland. He held the position that Kate is stepping into. He has been with Prosper Portland for 18 years, and he has just had such an impact in terms of our traded sector work. He has convened manufacturing network events and supply chains events. Everybody within manufacturing knows Kevin. It's when you go into spaces where you have manufacturers, it's like, do you know Kevin Johnson? You know, he is beloved. He has been there. He's helped with our major recruitments, all of our retentions. He's supported traditional manufacturing companies to help diversify them into clean tech and get access to semiconductor supply chain markets. He's been instrumental in supporting international trade work with Japan. He's really advocated for industrial lands to make sure that we have opportunities for quality employment opportunities, and he's had such strong partnerships and is a beloved partner of the Columbia Corridor Association, Northwest Industrial Business Association, Swan Island Business Association, and the Working Waterfront Coalition. So it is a very well-deserved retirement, but he has made an indelible mark on our organization and our city, and so just want to recognize his service. We will miss him. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Congratulations, Terry and Kevin, and welcome, Kate. All good news. Great, okay. Well, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 10, 2024? And that's assuming there are no comments.
I say move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, minutes are approved. Thank you. Next, we have public comment for items not on the agenda, and I understand that Clarence Larkins is here to speak about a matter related to Cully.
Welcome, Mr. Larkins.
Hello. Thanks for giving me your time.
You bet.
I'm Clarence Larkins. I live in the Cully District, and what I'm here to talk to you guys about, about this proposal, this is actually my resume as I look at it. We're trying to reclaim some property over on 42nd. It's called the Whittaker Property, Adams Whittaker Property, trying to reclaim that. And at one point, I thought you guys supported me on the project, but I haven't gotten anything in writing. So the school board, who owns the property, would like to see something in writing if you guys are supporting this project. And yeah, so I just came in today to share this with you. Like I said, it's my resume. I got a couple of roughest letters in here. So if you guys could take a look at this and see if you can remember, because it's been a couple of years since I've been in here. So if you guys could take a look and see if you can remember, but this project's got a unique name, P.O. Black Family Village. So it's probably easy to remember. But I need something saying if you guys support me or not with this project. So if someone can get back to me and let me know what's happening, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. We will review these materials, and someone will circle back to you.
Who should I expect to get back with me?
I'm not sure, actually, who on the staff will do so, but we will, yeah, Lisa's team. Yeah, we'll have somebody.
Okay, guys, I've been working with Kathy Hardinger. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I haven't heard from her lately. So if someone can get back to me, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Okay, next, we have consent agenda items. These are items six, seven, and eight. And unlike items to follow, we can approve all of these items in one fell swoop. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve items six, seven, and eight.
I move that we approve items six, seven, and eight on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. They pass you down the slate. All right, next, we have an action item. This is approving the Audit Committee members. And would somebody like to make a motion to appoint members to the Prosper Portland Audit Committee?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint members to the Audit Committee. Chair Cruz and Commissioner Serena Stoudamire-Russell, please.
Okay. And we both served before on that. Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thanks so much. Okay, next, we have item 10. This is an action item. This is authorizing a term sheet and an intergovernmental agreement related to the OMSI District Master Plan. And Amy Nagy and Paul Galliardi will present. So welcome, Amy and Paul.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's nice to see you, Director Branham. My name is Amy Nagy. I'm a Development Manager within the Development Investment Department here at Prosper Portland. I'm joined by my colleague, Paul Galliardi, who's a project manager on the team. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, just, we're attached to each other. We're here today to ask the Board to approve two actions. One is a resolution with the term sheet between Prosper Portland, OMSI, and the City of Portland that will help deliver on the OMSI District Central City Master Plan, as well as an intergovernmental agreement between Prosper and the Bureau of Transportation, also known as PBOAT, that directs funding from us to PBOAT for the design, construction, and management of New Water Avenue, which is a key project coming out of the OMSI developments. It also sets our roles and responsibilities between the two agencies. Next slide, please. Our efforts here today align with Advanced Portland, the city's economic development strategy, particularly outcome, Objective Three, which is fostering a vibrant central city and neighborhood corridors. In particular, two of the kind of sub-outcomes of those, catalyzing those public and private partnerships that lead to large-scale mixed development with high access for transit, as well as supporting our regional cultural organizations and anchors. Next slide, please. So OMSI has been really a cultural attraction in the city since the 1950s. It further became an anchor within the Central Eastside when it moved there in the early 90s from Washington Park. It welcomes over 1 million visitors a year. It hosts classroom and education opportunities for over 8,000 kids a year, while it also partners with other museums across the country in 15 states, bringing different exhibits and learning opportunities there as well. And so it's a really important institution here in the city. In addition to that programming that it offers, it has also created a vision where it sees itself as becoming the center of a new neighborhood, right, where it's a community destination that's rooted in innovation, arts and culture, the opportunity to continue to do science exploration, and really also serve as a platform for bringing back the native and indigenous presence along the waterfront and within the district. Next slide, please. So here's a timeline of partnership, and so the kind of the first line of milestones is really around the Central City Master Plan, and the second one is around funding. It starts in 2015, but really, OMSI has been setting a vision since 2008, and it's been engaging its stakeholders since that time, both those visitors to OMSI as well as other key partners. But the master plan that we know today was really rooted in the OMSI District Central City Master Plan through that process. And so this started in 2015, what yet another plan, Central City 2035 Plan, offered a tool called the Central City Master Plan. And so this was focused on key large sites around the central city where the city could see high-density development in addition to the kind of that multimodal and access that we love. And so OMSI was designated as required to go through that process. And so as part of that, it selected Edlin &amp; Company as well as to be its development advisor and partner, and CGF Architects, to take them through that master plan approval process. In 2019 through 2021, the Portland Community College, also known as the PCC Climes Center, as well as what was Portland Opera, now is going to be NARA, key institutions within the district joined the CCMP. OMSI unveiled its vision, and Mayor Wheeler actually directed Prosper Portland to be the lead bureau to coordinate both the city investment and partnership with OMSI on behalf of the city. At that time, OMSI was actually able to secure a $750,000 Metro grant to work very closely with the coalition of indigenous and tribal partners to set that vision for that presence, both along the waterfront and in the district. A little bit later, the State of Oregon actually also committed $5 million in lottery funds to support the design and build out of New Water Avenue. You're going to hear New Water Avenue a lot in this presentation, so just know that it's very important. 22 and 23, it was really dedicated to the approval of that master plan process. So there was a couple of hearings, and then OMSI received its approval in February of '23. A little later that year, Metro committed $7 million for the waterfront education park for that design and build out as well. And so that brings us here today, where we are bringing forward this term sheet in the IGA for your consideration. The term sheet is really identifying our mutual goals as a city as well as with OMSI, and it gives us a pathway to both achieve kind of individual projects, but further implement that master plan. And the IGA is one of those funding mechanisms, those project agreements to do that. It directs $10.9 million of existing tax increment financing from the Central Eastside. It also includes an additional $6 million from the state that was an award earlier this year to support infrastructure that will eventually lead to housing. Next slide, please. So this, oh, I think this is fancy. Will you hit it one more time? The Central City Master Plan, just a quick touch on the tool. It does a couple of things. So the intent of it really is to establish the urban design framework for these large sites. It sets the building pads. It helps determine what the adequate utilities would be. So this was particularly important to the OMSI site as it was originally a PGE substation and wasn't prepared for the level of mixed-use development that we can achieve there. It also sets kind of the building, what they will, the sizes, the heights, how they'll orient, protecting some of those public realm and private views. On the kind of the flexibilities, you know, the bonus for the owners or developers is the flexibility that can be created through this. And so instead of taking approvals site by site, what it does is it sets that minimum floor area ratio that can be met across the plan versus by that single site. So it allows them to be a little more responsive to the market as well as to build kind of to what the current demand is. It also allows them to shift the bonus height limits without going through additional requirements. And then in some instances, residential is actually allowed, which it is here at OMSI, which was not before. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at here is, within the OMSI District, OMSI does not actually control all of its properties. It controls about 50% of those in the district. And so what you're seeing here is through that master plan approval, they have about 2.5 million gross square feet that they could actually develop vertically. So you'll see that, we'll go through kind of what the site looks like, but you'll know them. It tracks A through F, and so you see that, and it can all be a mix of office, residential, and retail. So you, these are the parcels really that we're going to be focusing on today and that are in the term sheet. It also allows them to build up, build up to 1,200 units of housing district-wide. Next slide, please. So just a reminder that OMSI is in that Central Eastside Tiff District. It has been a longtime strategic site for the agency as well as the district. We regularly engage with the Central Eastside Industrial Council and other key stakeholders around and have made them aware of our interest in kind of the public benefits that this kind of development will offer and our investment to help support the infrastructure to make that happen. This is just a beautiful picture, so I wanted to include it. This is, so if OMSI were to fully build out, this is conceptually what it could look like on both its parcels as well as those that are owned by other entities. Next slide. So we're talking about some of those outcomes and those public benefits. So we've talked about the density, the new units of housing, phenomenal kind of collaboration that's been happening with the tribal and indigenous partners, and there's a great opportunity to spur that investment in the economic growth that we are so in badly need of. OMSI did an economic impact assessment with Eco Northwest a while back, and they estimated up to 11,000 new jobs could be created in a district like this, in addition to kind of continuing to leverage it being that hub for innovation, showcasing all of the climate solutions, of which we actually have some that are embedded already in the development. Next slide, please. So we're going to be on this slide for just a moment because this is, gets us into kind of the core of what the master plan is. Early on during the approval process, OMSI and Prosper in the city, we identified really three key partnership areas for the plan. So the first is around, and just to kind of orient you to the box, you'll see kind of what the different characteristics are across those three buckets of open space, infrastructure, and vertical development. The row below are the city partners that are involved in each of those respective areas, as well as the OMSI partners as well. So in the open space and waterfront, OMSI has about a mile-long waterfront. They're re-envisioning it to become a waterfront education park and have divided it really into three reaches. So the first reach is dedicated to the ecological restoration, that we're looking at opportunity for the, test the feasibility of a mitigation bank that the city's been pursuing it for some time. And then the central reach is really dedicated to education and the outdoor classrooms and getting folks reconnected with the water. And then the third is really dedicated to kind of an urban plaza. So it sits up higher, just from a grade perspective. It has beautiful views of the West Side and is envisioned to be where OMSI hosts its gatherings, its galas, other kind of community events. So BES and as well as Commissioner Maps's office have been very involved on the mitigation bank side. Portland Parks and Recreation also as well. And then OMSI and the Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission, who we're joined with by today and they're going to be speaking in a little bit, are going to issue a joint RFP for the design of the waterfront and really prioritizing kind of the native vision and objectives. So it's super exciting. In terms of infrastructure, so what you're looking at right now is really a site plan. All of the colorful boxes there represent the development pads where you could actually have buildings be. The darker shaded areas are three key streets that will be, that will result out of this development. So New Water Avenue is that one that's pushed furthest to the right. It is going to be kind of the nerve center of the, of the district. It's going to hold all UNE utilities, including water. The, the area does not have proper sanitary sewer, so it's actually going to have a third-party system that's closed-loop, similar to what we have up at Hasselhorn, Ethan Lloyd, South Waterfront, which is kind of a great sustainability story, as well as additional utilities. And it will be a primary way for circulation of autos, freight. There's going to be a two-way cycle track, so folks needing to move quickly through the district on their bicycles can do that and avoid some of that mode conflict that can happen along the waterfront where folks are, you know, walking and trying to enjoy the water, and then you've got a cyclist's cruising pass. So several city bureau partners on that, as you can see, and then OMSI will be working with its sanitary sewer providers as well as the railroad in TriMet to help make that happen. One comment, too, is there is going to be a need for a new parking solution. So where you see those kind of green, if you, if you're in an eye test, you can see it's E and F, which are going to be those is current, right now is OMSI surface parking. Those are key redevelopment sites, and so we're going to be in one of the phases exploring with them feasibility of what a district parking solution looks like. district parking solution looks like. And that's not only OMSI district but Central East Side at large. And then the third kind of bucket, if you will, is the vertical development. And this is where we have that kind of variety of uses and density that we talked about. It'll be phased over time and there's a real opportunity to partner with them, both from a prosper perspective, as well as the Portland Housing Bureau, on some of the affordable housing goals that we'll talk, we'll touch base on in a moment, as well as some of the programming and teneting that will go on in those commercial spaces. Another key partner is the Northwest Native Chamber, who are also joined by today, who is working to secure one of the sites actually that's not owned by OMSI, but to move forward with the Center for Tribal Nations, which is a space where kind of cultural and economic prosperity will be celebrated and achieved. And so they're working right now on that, actually through another Metro grant. Next slide, please. So we have all these kind of great partnership and development priorities and they're in many cases mutual and some are, some are somewhat distinct. So New Water Avenue, we've talked about just unlocking some of that development. One other aspect of kind of the benefit of OMSI undertaking this is that as they develop the parcels, these can be coming, these can become ongoing revenue sources to support their operations, expand their programming that they do so well at the moment. On the city's side, we're really after vertical development. So the city's made previous infrastructure investments in there, particularly as you think about the orange line that came along with the, with the, with the bridge and now wanting to see what can we do to really leverage some of that, that transit accessibility and achieve not only that mixed income housing, which we so desperately need, but also complementing kind of the industrial center that is the Central East Side, offering more multimodals through New Water Avenue is a large priority, particularly as it complements PBOT's other plans around Central City in motion and giving kind of accessibility along Water Avenue, even north of the, the district. And then activating that waterfront and, and getting some more programming, et cetera. Next slide. So the term sheet, the scope really does kind of three key things. One, it addresses only OMSI-owned parcels, since those are what they have control over and could be responsible for. So what you're looking at in terms of this map is those, those spaces that have an X on it are those that are not included. So PCC, there's two private owners in the green and then the former Portland Opera sites are not included. It also defies some key, defines some key terms as well as project categories. So there's the public infrastructure and development investments that are in that term sheet and those are really anticipated to be city-led and city-funded and aren't dependent upon vertical development. Then there's the private infrastructure and private development projects that are going to be OMSI-led with its partners. It also establishes a process for future development phases, both in, in terms of timing as well as potential funding in those project agreements. Next slide, please. And so there's a few key agreements I want to touch base on here. So the project phasing, it is based on the Central City Master Plan, the approved one, which is really an infrastructure-based plan. And so certain, certain sites cannot be unlocked but for infrastructure, so we'll go over those in a moment. The other part is because of that drive to see the vertical development, the city will not proceed to the Phase Two of the term sheet until 250,000 square feet of private vertical development is constructed. We also won't proceed till Phase Three until the private infrastructure and development is completed as well, and you'll see what those look like in a moment. In terms of city funding, we're really leaning in on this first phase because we want to see that development and construction. And so OMSI has agreed not to seek any other financial support from the city partners to this term sheet for any projects that are identified within the CCMP, except for those that are already noted within the term sheet, or if we can come to an agreement with them as an aside. For New Water Avenue, we have a set date of June 30th of 2025 and that is to secure our funding. So we have a gap in that project cost right now. Our investment of TIF in the state funds is in effort to close that gap. But if we're not able to achieve that, then we actually have kind of a waterfall process that we'll undertake that could also result in OMSI securing a local improvement district in order, as a backstop in order to pay for that. The waterfront education park sets a timeline for that mitigation bank feasibility based on design and their ability to secure funding for design as well as the construction for spring 2028. If that doesn't come to fruition, OMSI will kind of reabsorb that first reach, that northern reach, and it will tie back into the central and southern reaches and they'll be responsible for building that out. No matter what, it does need to be cohesive with the design that they and crit fic come up with. And so there are, there are terms within, within that agreement that, that outline that. The affordable housing, so OMSI and PHB are, have a joint goal to achieve 240 to 300 affordable housing units that are between 0 and 80% AMI throughout the district. And this includes inclusionary housing, could be through state funding or PHB-supported units if we have a new TIF district in place. And then just general provision, so OMSI is elected to voluntarily apply our business and workforce equity and green building policies to its private projects. So it would do it based on whatever makes sense, so whether it was a commercial, it could be a prosper base, if it was infrastructure, it could be more of a city base. And then the publicly funded projects will comply with all the applicable policies as usual. Next slide, please. Okay, so these are the project categorizations and the phasing over time in the term sheet. So the project category is running along the left that we had just talked about, the public infrastructure projects, private infrastructure, private development and public development, which is really the affordable housing. As I mentioned, Phase One is really driving towards that development and construction. So coming out of this, we will have, New Water Avenue will be done, we'll have an answer on the mitigation bank, a new sewer will be in place with New Water Avenue. Ideally, we'll have a new affordable housing project with 80 units, as well as that minimum gross square footage that's going to be built out. And then OMSI and PHB will have started their discussions around how to kind of frame their partnership. Phase Two is dedicated to feasibility. And so this is, we're not anticipating much to be developed at this point, but we're looking at that district parking solution that I talked about, as well as OMSI will run its feasibility for developing the tracks CE and F, which would be those remaining parcels. And then P, OMSI and PHB will have kind of a partnership agreement with a plan for their project delivery on those affordable units. And Phase Three is back to development and construction. So based on feasibility, we'll be aiming for to have that district parking solution depending on kind of the financing and some of those other needs, but we anticipate it could look something like a smart park on the east side, which we don't currently have. The Loop Road, which actually serves the back of OMSI as a museum, as well as some of the, as some of the other tracks will be built. And then tracks CE and F are advancing. And then at that time too, PHB will have a, an affordable housing project, they'll be working with OMSI to mutually agree on a site for, for them to control and deliver. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is my last bit and then I'm going to turn it over to Paul. So just looking over kind of what our funding is right now, as I mentioned, we're really leaning in on that first phase. So the project list is really around infrastructure and we're thinking about it from all phases, so the streets, the utilities, that waterfront education park and the programming. And then there's the total cost, so we're looking at around 90 million, but please keep in mind that doesn't include district parking. And some of these projects right now are at different stages where this is kind of much more of a rough order of magnitude. But I will say for New Water Avenue, we have greater confidence around that. It's based on 30% design, we're just about to get an updated estimate. So in terms of the commitment of the sources, those that are highlighted in blue is where the city is committing. So there could be other public funding, but where the city is committing right now is $500,000 in the transportation system development charges. That 10.9 million in TIF. We'll look at what district parking could be, it could be future TIF if that comes to fruition, or some other city resource. And then the Parks Bureau is holding $4 million in their own systems development charge to support some of the public investments along the waterfront education park. So all in for the first phase, the city is putting in 15.4 million. As I mentioned, Phase Two is feasibility and so dependent upon that will help to determine what, if any, investment comes in Phase Three. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul, who's going to talk a little bit about our IGA with PBOT.
There you go. It's the fancy one too. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Board members and Executive General Branham. I'm excited to share the first project of Phase One of the term sheet with you guys. This is the IGA between Prosper and PBOT for the construction of New Water Avenue. The combination of funding 10 million in TIF and 6 million in business from Business Oregon is for the design and construction. Sorry, we're helping to, this funding will help close the gap and activate multiple parcels for redevelopment. Prosper will be acting as the funding agency with PBOT managing the design and construction along with OMSI's general contractors. Next slide. This is a high-level schedule of the project, starting with our current milestone in the fundraising where we're at today. And concurrently, the project is in design, expecting to hit the 60% design milestone in October. With the proper funding, the New Water Avenue realignment project is expected to reach substantial completion by mid 2027. Next slide. And one more. Thank you. And we would like to acknowledge and thank all the community partners, especially OMSI and the various city bureaus, BES, Parks, BPS, PBOT and the Water Bureau for all their help in creating, refining the term sheet and making this project a reality in such a short amount of time. I would like to thank Kimberly, Lisa, Amy, Pam, a ton for helping me through my first project here. And so it's been a great help and great experience. So next slide. And we want to thank you for your time and if you have any questions, we're open for, to answer them.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments?
First off, I know it's been a long haul, so I want to congratulate everyone who's been working on this. It's a huge milestone, so congratulations. I think it's very exciting for the city of Portland. I live on the east side and very excited. Our offices are right behind OMSI. This is going to be really great for the neighborhood as well as for the city. I had the opportunity to ask this question during my board prep session, but I think it's worthy of asking again for the benefit of the community, the public, future developers who might be interested in partnering or buying a site from OMSI in this location. So as I'm sure those of you who have worked on this project know, there is a tension between the green building policies, construction, business and workforce equity policies, together with the desire for expediency with this project. No one wants to see this sit. And then there was the language in the term sheet that OMSI will not, agrees not to seek financial support from the city partners. And I know, I think I, this was explained to me during my prep session, but I think it's, it's worth elaborating on what can seem like a slightly punitive type language that appears in the term sheet from someone who is not involved in the deal negotiations whatsoever. Can you meet, or you want?
Oh yeah, no, you can answer.
Thanks for asking the question. On the record, I think it's a really important one and I want to, they're related but distinct to a certain extent. So I want to note that, I just want to emphasize the appreciation, I mean, Amy and Paul, but also we have so many partners here. We have spent a lot of time crafting something over the last few years. And so I look forward to having our partners also speak to that question just from, in terms of how they're, how they're feeling. But I think from the city's standpoint, one of the things that we wanted to do here is to make sure that we were coordinated in the requests. And so OMSI and other partners can absolutely come forward and ask for PSF funding or additional SDCs. It's not, that's not prohibited in the, in the term sheet, but what would need to happen first is that there would need to be a conversation. Because it felt like it was a really important process for us all to sit around the table and identify what you saw on the one side, which is what are the city's priorities, what are OMSI and partners' priorities, come up with something that's a shared agreement and basically a process and a table by which we are continuing to move forward. So that's really the, the intent is for there to be kind of no surprises, right? The city is agreeing to make these investments and to the extent that there are other needs, whether that's co-investing or co-applying for federal funds or the like, we want to make sure that we are coordinated in that approach. In terms of the, OMSI voluntarily agreeing to move forward with business and workforce equity and green building standards, we'll note two things. One is that the specific standards are not dictated in the term sheet. And so OMSI can decide what that means from their perspective and I think it'll be helpful for them to talk about kind of how that is seen. But I think what we understand is that it's very in line with the conversations that they've had with community partners around wanting to be sustainable and equitable in their approach. And so we didn't hear that it was going to be an extraordinary burden, but also to the extent that there are parts of what the Housing Bureau requires, well, that's slightly, but what Prosper Portland would require, the city would require, those are only required for projects in which we are directly investing. And otherwise, it's really up to OMSI and their development partners to determine what that means.
That's great, thank you.
Absolutely. Amy, do you agree with what I just said? Okay.
Also wanted to echo Commissioner Slick's gratitude for all the effort. I've also been part of various OMSI-related planning conversations, probably for almost seven or eight years, as a, a business resident of the Central East Side, as a Southeast Portlander and as a, a father and cyclist that rides, rides my bike with my children over to, to OMSI and into that area. So really grateful for the, the work that everyone's put in to create a really compelling vision for the future of, of the neighborhood. I had a question as it pertained to the, the waterfront park and, you know, how as the design effort and the funding is, is procured, how we might both balance the, you know, various stakeholder objectives that you discussed in, in the proposal, as well as perhaps borrow insight from our neighbors to the north in Vancouver around like waterfront development and accessibility? I'm just curious if any thought had been given to a waterfront park that might be accessible by either kayak, canoe, paddleboard, or even, you know, boats that might be on the Willamette River. It seems like such a beautiful space to commune and enjoy culture and creativity. I know that OMSI already has a dock, which usually is the first barrier to any sort of waterfront development is having existing waterfront access. And so I'm just curious in, in the process, if any consideration had been given to or considered for how that waterfront park might be accessible via the water.
If I could interject, it'd be great to have your response, but also I understand that our invited testimony will also have a view on some of these questions. So maybe they could come up now and just be available in case you want to elaborate. So Aaron Graham from OMSI is with us, James Allen Parker from the Northwest Native Chamber, and Asia DeCato is also here. So welcome to all of you. And do a group effort. Didn't mean to. Do you want to come back? Yeah. All right. So back to your question. Did you all hear the question?
Yes.
Okay.
I can start and then we can all contribute. Good afternoon, I'm Erin Graham, the President and CEO of OMSI. It's really a pleasure to be here today at, with you at this very exciting milestone after many, many years of work. So for the waterfront education park, that vision came from two years of work that we did with a Center for Tribal Nations Advisory Committee, helping us to develop the vision for the vertical infrastructure that James can share more about, and then this waterfront education park that Asia can share more about. And because that 24-member committee was representative of, I think it was seven tribes of the Pacific Northwest, as well as the urban indigenous community, they brought all of that to bear. And so one of the things that we are discussing is how could we have a canoe launch there? Where could that go? How can we make sure that people have access to the water? And part of our shared interest is that we know that if people have access and they can develop a relationship and reconnect the land into the water, they're going to want to steward it going forward and that that's a very important piece of this park for all of us and one of our shared values. What else you had? That's good. Okay. We spent a lot of time together.
Any other questions now? Felisa, have any? Okay, great, thank you. Well, I would just echo some of the comments, a lot of the things I was going to ask have already been answered, but also I would add to the gratitude for all the effort everybody's put in. I can remember talking to Mayor Hales about this, so it goes back a long way. And I think, I think it was, I think it was a topic even before Mayor Hales, so it's been around a long time. I did have one question, and I don't know if this would be too, sort of a nuts and bolts question. So a long time ago, I was involved with a Slab Town Master Plan, which was another big development, started with one major property owner and then eventually properties sort of got divvied up. And then you had this combination of, of, you know, properties owned by different folks and a master plan. And then eventually there became, some friction arose between parties owning different parcels and it was a little difficult to, to get it. arose between parties owning different parcels, and it was a little difficult to get it all to work as was originally envisioned. And I just wondered, how does this play out in this situation? You have some other participants and parcels that aren't owned by OMSI. Are those folks all kind of dialed in, and do you feel good about all that?
Yes. We've really been working in earnest on this since 2008, and a big part of our work has been engaging community. You know, OMSI is a community-based organization, and we do everything with a lot of input. I think what has changed has been our closer work with our indigenous partners. And we have moved to a consensus-based model for decision-making related to the district and district-based decisions that has included all of our partners. It takes time, and it takes relationship and trust-building over time, but I think the results speak for themselves. And it also means that we can collaborate on really hard things together and have those conversations, and ultimately end up at a solution that I think works for everybody. I don't know what you both would add.
I think it starts with the philosophical approach and understanding how you're moving and who you're representing, and I think that's been clearly established over the past few years, as we clearly centered community voices in this entire process. So I think that helps to build that trust.
We kind of got off on questions with staff to begin with, but you may have prepared testimony. If you want to, if you have a statement or something, please feel free to share, so.
Thank you. Well, a lot of it Amy covered so well, which again, I think speaks to the fact that we've been working together for all of these years. I was like, wow, she knows a lot about OMSI. But as she mentioned, we serve 1.2 million people a year, and we really are a cornerstone of the educational and cultural landscape here in Portland and across the state and the region. And this vision to transform 24 acres into a new mixed-use neighborhood that is truly welcoming and rooted in innovation and arts and culture and science learning with our partners, I think will be unique not only in Portland, but unique in the nation. And I'm most excited that we have found a pathway to partnering with the city of Portland and really aligning on our shared values and the values that we have with Prosper. We know that we want affordable housing for families. We know that we want sustainable transit-oriented development. We know that we want to increase and grow the prosperity for our key cornerstone organizations in this community, including OMSI, including Northwest Native Chamber, including Crip FIC. And so we see this as an opportunity to really grow shared prosperity for all of us. It will, of course, create jobs. It will, of course, create new tax basis for Portland, and we understand that's really important, but I think most importantly, it will help to change the narrative of Portland and what's possible if we have shared vision together. So that's really, I really wanted to add. And I have also really deeply appreciated the partnership of Prosper and the city as we have collaborated to pursue different kinds of funding. And these types of transformational projects don't just happen, and it takes a lot of people coming together to think differently. OMSI will be mounting its probably its largest private campaign, philanthropic campaign, coming up when we have a little bit more clarity on some pieces of this, but we are already co-pursuing federal grants from the EPA, from Department of Transportation, through congressionally-directed spending asks. And so I think that this type of public-private partnership can really be a model for how we can do things differently going forward when we partner with community and center community voice, as James said. So thank you very much for all of your support, and I really want to thank the Prosper team for working with us so closely.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioner Cruz, commissioners and directors. My name, for the record, is James Allen Parker, enrolled Citizenship of Waukamiwa, tribal nation, and executive director for the Northwest. So OMSI has worked alongside tribal governments, native, indigenous communities to create a vision for a Center for Tribal Nations. OMSI has worked alongside tribal governments, native and indigenous communities to create a vision for a Center for Tribal Nations and a new waterfront education park within the OMSI district. Through these projects, the OMSI district will restore tribal presence along the shores of the Willamette in Portland's center city, offering a unique opportunity to honor and celebrate indigenous culture and build shared prosperity for generations to come. We urge Portland City Council to approve the necessary infrastructure funding to ensure this vision is realized. Together, in 2020, indigenous organizations, OMSI and the city of Portland received an equitable development grant as part of Metro's 2040 Planning and Development Program. The affiliated tribes of Northwest Indians led extensive tribal outreach in January of 2021, which led to a resolution of support representing nearly 50 tribes in the Northwest. The Center for Tribal Nations Advisory Committee, made up of tribal leaders, elected tribal leaders, and community stakeholders, then led a process to consider the optimal combinations of programs, uses, and activities, as well as the values and principles that should guide further efforts to bring this vision to life. The Center for Tribal Nations Advisory Committee created visions for the CTN, dreamt into existence for decades. The Center for Tribal Nations celebrates and catalyzes the power of indigenous peoples' cultures and presence on the river. We envision a hub of commerce and trade for the urban indigenous community and native nations across the Pacific Northwest. The Center for Tribal Nations will stand strong on the shores of the Willamette River in the central east side, just across from downtown Portland. This location has served as a confluence site for native nations, use for commerce, trade, and relationship building. This project is a reclamation of space along the Willamette River, which has held significant ties for native nations since time immemorial. The district's development will create significant economic opportunities for indigenous business and tribally-owned entities, enabling us to create intergenerational prosperity. Your support will enable this inclusive, community-focused project to move forward. The 14.9 million investment described in the term sheet is critical for laying the foundation for the Center for Tribal Nations. This funding will unlock vertical development and ensure that the district becomes a platform for cultural and economic exchange. The OMSI district represents a shared vision with strong support from tribal communities, OMSI, and other partners. Your investment will help bring this collaborative, culturally-significant project to life and bring people to this place. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, members of the board, also Director Branham and other staff, as well as invited guests and others who are here today. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Asia Decotto. I'm a citizen of the Yakima Nation and have other tribally-identity with the Cayuse, Nespers, and Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa Indians. I currently serve as the executive director for the Columbia River Intertribal Fish Commission, which I will henceforth call Crip FIC as our acronym. So the Willamette River is the flowing center of Portland and has been since time immemorial, connecting and providing resources for the region's tribes for thousands of years. Crip FIC has been working alongside OMSI, the city of Portland, and Metro, and together we envision a new waterfront education park in the OMSI district. The park will be a free public green space for all communities, centered in indigenous culture, and offering free learning opportunities related to ecological and cultural knowledge, native plants, river health, and cultural placemaking opportunities that highlight the historical tribal connection to the Willamette River, as well as an invitation to all visitors to foster their own deeper connection to the rivers, as Erin mentioned before. It will also include viewing platforms, plazas, restored riverfront habitats, which are crucial for fish, hands-on outdoor science programming, and much, much more. The Center for Tribal Nations Advisory Committee that James described was also used to get guidance and ideas for the initial design concepts and vision for the waterfront education park. The committee articulated a vision for the park as a place of healing to explore and experience the river through a tribal lens of culture and science. We will have continued engagement through future phases of development and design of the park to ensure that the park reflects these values, ideas, and priorities of the region, as well as the city's tribes and tribal communities. The OMSI district presents the opportunity to transform current parking lots and brownfields into a neighborhood that adds 4.5 acres of parks and green spaces to the central east side. Our goal is to showcase advanced climate solutions through transportation, next-generation urban systems and technology, while also providing learning experiences for the public and advocating informed action. This approach to engaging both native and non-native communities and people with the river and understanding the connection between human and planetary health is imperative to protect and restore fish habitats and water quality in our waterways. The 14.9 million investment in the term sheet supports infrastructure development for the waterfront education park and helps to leverage the 7 million investment from Metro. Crip FIC and OMSI have partnered on numerous projects for decades, including developing culturally-relevant exhibits, as well as combining Western science along with traditional ecological knowledge, as well as partnering to implement our salmon camp to foster salmon science and cultural connections to our native youth. Your investment will help to continue this work of bridging cultures and worldviews by bringing this important project and public park to life. Thank you for your time today, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for your comments and for coming today. Anybody have any more comments?
Just have one thing I wanted to add. So I really appreciate all of your work. I've seen this, you do like three presentations, so I know you've been making the rounds, Erin, on getting this out there to the community. And I'm very, very excited about this project going forward, and one of the things that I think has been really successful is the synergy that you've created on asking and speaking with one voice to ask for different things. And I feel like I worry a little bit about that in the Phase Two portion of this, how that could fall apart, and so I guess I just want to put a marker in whatever it takes to keep that good work moving forward, so that you're speaking with one collective voice, because I think that that will help accomplish what we need in Phase Two to get to Phase Three. And I think that that's also really critical for Prosper, to be a part of that collective and joint community ask with you, and to not separate this apart, especially as we go into the rest of the day where there'll be other TIF districts, other conversations happening. Oftentimes, in my experience in the legislature, what you can see is this is, it will create, it can create a dividing point where they'll try to pit one piece of you against another, and I think that that collective voice will make us successful overall, so.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks very much. Really appreciate it. So we will go ahead then, if nobody has any more comments, we'll go ahead, and we have two items to vote on. First, the resolution for the term sheet, and then the IGA resolution. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7550 regarding the term sheet?
Moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then would somebody like to make a motion on the IGA Resolution Number 7551?
I moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. These formalities. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks so much. Okay, great. Well, that wraps that up. So thanks very much for all your good work. Fabulous. Appreciate it. Okay. Yes. Okay. Next, we have item number 11. This is an action item, authorizing construction loan to Falcon Building LLC in a mountain ought to exceed $4,352,000 for construction of an office-to-residential building conversion project at 321 Northwest Gleason. And Kay Little will present. Welcome, Kay.
Hello. Thought for a second that clapping was for me. I thought it was.
It may have been. May have been.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Kay Little, and I'm the asset and investment manager at Prosper Portland. Got the slides. All right, next slide, please. So I'm here today to request approval of a $4.3 million construction loan to the Falcon Building LLC for the conversion of the building at 321 Northwest Gleason to a middle-income housing project. Next slide, please. First, I'll give you a little background about the Falcon Building. It's located a few blocks away from us at 321 Northwest Gleason. It's a seven-story, 85,000-square-foot building that was originally constructed in 1926, and it was renovated by the current property owner and developer in 2015. So he's currently undertaking a project to convert this from office to residential, which is very exciting. The plan is to convert it to 59 middle-income housing units here in the district. Next slide, please. So the property owner is really early, relatively early in the process. He's currently completing pre-development activities. The early estimate is that it will cost about $16.5 million to complete the project. We recently approved a pre-development loan to assist the developer in firming up that estimate, and we'll be able, on the lending team, to complete our underwriting of the request once that work is done. But that kind of ran us into a bit of a timing issue, because while it may take several, it will take several months for the pre-development work and the underwriting to be completed, the remaining resources in the downtown waterfront TIF district have to be dispersed before the new TIF districts can be created. And so we've proposed to lend $4.3 million to the Falcon Building project, which will go toward that cost. Next slide, please. And so I want to talk a little bit about how we've kind of structured this initial tranche of funding for the project. We're proposing that we fund that $4.3 million, and since we haven't firmed up the construction cost or completed the underwriting, the goal is to have those funds placed in a controlled bank account that can't be withdrawn by the developer without our consent. And developer understands that we will not provide our consent for that until all the funding for the project are actually in place, whether that funding is coming from us, from another source, or a combination thereof. So this structure actually allows us to demonstrate support for the project while also retaining flexibility in how we structure the funding for any future construction or permanent loan for the project. So you can see the initial terms there is that initially, there's 24 months that we're anticipating for the pre-development work to be completed and for the developer to secure any additional financing for the project. Again, if that's not all coming from us, they're not being charged any interest while the funds are sitting in that account. Once they, once we have a construction loan actually approved, that loan would, initially what we're anticipating is it would have a 36-month term, and we would then secure the loan with the property, and then we'd have an interest rate that would increase to 8%. Keep in mind that if we do end up coming back, or we do provide additional funds, of course, we'll come back to the board. We anticipate that what would happen if we're providing additional funds is that these dollars will be combined with that money, so that we have one loan. And if through our underwriting process, any of those terms, like the interest rate, are going to change, this money will actually match that funding, so you won't have two loans with different terms. So we'll make sure that we align those two things. Next slide, please. As it relates to our strategic plan alignment, the ones that really stand out here are the Advanced Portland Plan to increase mixed-income housing and to support office-to-residential conversion. It also aligns with the Old Town Action Plan, where we're facilitating development and rehab of privately-owned properties with a real focus on the creation of market-rate housing in the district. Next slide, please. The project will be subject to our construction business and workforce equity policy, as well as our green building policy. And then the next slide, please. And it also aligns with the Old Town Action Plan, where middle-income housing is a priority. The Old Town Community Association is very supportive of this project and how we're intending to use the funding for it. Next slide. That's it. So, questions for me?
Any questions?
I had a question that I just want to confirm. So we don't own the property, we're just doing the construction loan, because we had a piece of public comment that was sent to us about mitigation factors for a commercial tenant in the property, but that would be worked out between the building owner and the resident, the commercial tenant.
Correct, yeah, because we don't own the property. I don't know what that plan is. I have reached out to the owner just to see what their plans are for that tenant that's in the building at this point, if they move forward. I have not heard back from them, but I received that question. I have not heard back from them, but I received that question a few minutes ago, and I did reach out and happy to circle back with that response.
Great, that'd be great if you just want to email us when you get the answer back.
Yeah, happy to do that.
And then I just want to also confirm that this is our first switch. This is our first loan into a commercial-to-residential conversion, correct?
Yes, it is. We are looking at another project here in the district that we may do a similar loan, but we're also pretty early in that process, too.
Great. I just want to say that I'm incredibly supportive of this kind of transition, especially in the sort of Class B sort of sized building, and I think that it's a component of the future that we really have to look forward to. So I'm hoping this is one of many, and I'm also hoping that it goes smoothly and quickly, especially with the rest of the financing that the building owner needs to secure. And so I feel like how Prosper supporting the, sort of helping the building owner get the rest of the financing together to make this change, I would just be really interested in a follow-up if that's possible at some point as the process goes along. I think, great job, and I'm super excited.
Yeah, happy to do that. We're really hoping to support this project. We recognize that they may run into some difficulty in securing financing from another source, so we're prepared, if possible, to provide 100% of the financing for the project to be successful. So we'll see how that goes, but definitely we'll circle back with you on that.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, I know we had the opportunity to talk about this. I missed the follow-up meeting, but I know we were able to connect a few weeks ago, and I kind of wanted to repeat what I said during our discussion then, which is that it is the first time that we are seeing a conversion happen in recent history in Portland, and it's been a hot topic. It's nice to see that it's coming in at $280,000 per unit, which is pretty efficient, but it is the first of its kind. So I think it's really valuable for us to share lessons learned, the process, if the developer is willing to speak to that with the broader development community. I think there is interest in some other buildings, but I think there's been a lot of perceived risk, which, I shouldn't say perceived, real risk with doing any sort of repositioning, but also uncertainty about the process with the city. I think the city is also a little uncertain about how this is all going to play out. So I think having that as a learning point would be really valuable to hopefully make it less risky moving forward. I was curious if you knew, and I know that you had just inquired with the developer, do you know if the units, the residential units and commercial units are going to be located on the same floor, or are, is the developer separating out the residential from the commercial by floor?
I think that it is being separated out, where the commercial will be on the ground floor and the resident, but I confirm that.
Okay, I think that's great, and that's a pretty typical structure with retail on the ground floor.
That's what I'm expecting is the case here.
Okay. Do we know if this, if the Prosper loan, if the developer's successful in sourcing a third-party construction loan, are we planning on crossing that bridge when we get there, or do we know if we will be subordinate to the loan?
If they did source another loan, we would definitely be subordinate to that. I think that from their early indications, that's probably going to be very difficult for them to find that money for this project. So we're already anticipating that we probably will provide 100% financing, but, you know, that's a search that they're continuing to look into as they're, you know, in the pre-development stage to see if they can secure additional financing. But if they do find that, we will be subordinate to that.
Okay. And then, I think that was my last question, and, you know, you're probably already thinking about this, but the rate is high.
Yes.
So if we were to be subordinate to a loan, it would make sense that the rate is high. But if we are not for some reason, then an adjustment is probably marked to some degree. So I think something just for discussion as we move down the line with them.
We really use this rate kind of as a placeholder, because we had to have some terms for a construction loan if it is dispersed. I think obviously if we're doing a much larger loan, now the impact of that debt service makes a real difference, and so that interest rate is probably going to have to be adjusted, obviously much lower than 8%. We just don't know where that is until we have a chance to complete the underwriting and risk rating the loan as we normally would. So we wanted to make sure that we have the terms in the loan now at this stage as we're getting approval, and then we'll circle back to that as we look at the larger loan.
Right. And I guess I wanted to take this opportunity while we're talking about a conversion, just to say out loud, conversion projects are not going to solve our housing crisis. It is a component of the many things that we're going to need to address housing, but I think conversion has a place, especially in the central city and in Old Town in particular, because it brings more 24/7 traffic in an area that lacks it. And this project in particular is providing middle-income housing. So I want to say that out loud and just acknowledge that for our community, because I think that's really important to highlight. Another part of it, too, is, you know, you don't want to see all of the historic buildings, all of them. I'm not suggesting we need to landmark the heck out of downtown, that is not what I'm saying, but it really hurts the character and placemaking of a downtown when you tear down all the buildings that are older. And so I think the properties and the handful that actually makes sense for conversion, considering support of those, is important. But again, it's not going to be the thing that solves our housing crisis in a broad stroke. But I think this is a great coup for Old Town. I think it's a great coup for going out on a limb and trying a conversion project and understanding how our city deals with that. So I'm really excited to see this move forward.
I had my comments earlier, and my questions have all been answered. So thank you so much. Great presentation. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7552 regarding the construction loan to Falcon Building?
I so moved.
Second. Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so next up, we have a number of items related to TIF. Items 12, 13, and 14, action items approving the termination, dissolution of eight urban renewal plans and tax increment finance districts, approving amendments to three urban renewal plans, and approving six urban renewal area plans and recommending adoption to City Council. So would everyone like to join us at the table? That would include Lisa Abouaf, Brian Moore, Sarah Harpohl, Roger Gonzalez, Catherine Hartinger, Dana Declan, Tony Barnes, and Raul Mendez. Welcome, team. What's that? Oh, that's okay. Okay. So whoever would like to go first, we'll have everybody speak, and then we'll have our invited testimony come up, and then we'll do questions. So that's our order on this one, so.
Okay, I get to go first.
Great.
So, good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Abouaf. I'm the Director of Development and Investment with Prosper Portland. Do you she/her pronouns? And I just want to, I think what you see before you as kind of the size of the team presenting on this is indicative of the significance and kind of transformational moment for the agency in terms of the work that we're presenting before you today. There is a package of actions, so I'm going to apologize to you, because you're going to have like multiple votes to take, but there, it's a pretty tremendous package of actions that involves both changes to existing TIF districts, as well as the introduction of new TIF districts. And last, I want to kind of add thank yous both for the folks who are seated here with us today and will be presenting, co-presenting with me, but there's a whole number of staff behind the scenes who were instrumental in this work over the past year or so. And in particular, I wanted to do a call-out for folks who are not presenting with us, which is the legal team, the procurement team, our comms team, and our policy teams. This represents thousands and thousands of hours of work by the agency that we've tried to capture in the next 70 or so slides. So bear with us. The roadshow begins. Next slide, Justin. So this provides an overview of how we're going to walk through this material. First, Raul and I are going to provide kind of a context setting about TIF districts, how TIF has been used, kind of, and housing set aside as an important policy element of tax increment finance investments by the city of Portland. We're going to provide a policy context, particularly around Advanced Portland and the Housing Production Strategy Policy that is under discussion right now as we speak at the, at City Council. And then staff are going to go through kind of the TIF exploration process that we undertook with City Council direction. We're going to go through the actions that are related to terminating eight districts and amending three TIF districts that are in existence today. And then staff are also going to go over the creation of six new TIF districts that resulted from significant amounts of community engagement and co-creation, and then we'll have our invited testimony. So next slide. So first chapter is providing an overview of tax increment finance, kind of how it works, and a little bit kind of backward-looking analysis that we had Echo Northwest do, as well as our set-aside policy. So next slide, Justin. So we often start our presentations with our community partners using this slide, in part because tax increment financing can be a little bit of kind of a wonky, a wonky idea, but what we want to highlight with this slide particularly for the board is, again, tax increment finance is a property tax growth-based public funding tool that has been instrumental for the city of Portland in delivering on economic development and housing goals. And probably the second most important thing that we often share with community, it is not a new tax. So it is, in fact, kind of a repurposing and a refocusing of existing property taxes, but it will not increase anybody's property taxes, and I am saying that as much for our public viewership as I am for our board. Next slide. So this slide is a timeline that shows our existing tax increment districts, and really what we are here today to present to you is a moment of transition from the last generation of tax increment finance districts that have been instrumental in how Portland grew from the 80s through to today, and then highlight some key factors about the status of each of those TIF districts, because it informs the package that is before you today. So what you see in green are North McAdam, which is in South Waterfront, because others don't use that term, but it's a kind of the tax increment finance district in South Waterfront. Gateway and Cully, those are our active TIF districts, i.e. they have a significant amount of TIF proceeds remaining, and the district is anticipated to stay active for the next five to 35 years. The next set of TIF districts are what we call our sunsetting TIF districts, that is Central East Side Interstate Lence and the Willamette URA. In those districts, we have, we continue to have existing tax increment finance proceeds, and so we'll continue to spend those down within the TIF district area and plan. And what you'll see is we are proposing to amend some of those areas to be able to continue to spend down those existing resources. And then in blue, you see a lot of our historic TIF districts are in fact concluded, that much of the plan has been accomplished, there are no tax increment finance resources remaining, the district is largely inactive, and much of our resources are really committed to property management activities, because we do continue to carry properties in those TIF districts. And then we have a smaller subset that will become a larger subset, should you approve some of the actions today, which is terminated, and those are the Airport Way Tax Agreement Finance District and a couple of the NPN areas in Cully that we actually had the board terminate when we created the Cully TIF district. Next slide, Justin. But before we look forward, it's always important to kind of look back and do some lessons learned. And so what we wanted to share before jumping into kind of thinking about the next generation of TIF districts is what did we learn from a past generation of TIF districts? I think as the board is familiar, we hired Echo Northwest to undertake a TIF impact report. They actually looked at the performance of tax increment finance districts over the past 20, 25 years, and we're highlighting some key elements that have informed our process and some of the recommendations that we're bringing for, before you today. First, I think we have learned that it is key and critical to actually use TIF for investment in housing production across a spectrum of income. So we know that the set-aside is a key element to delivering on affordable housing goals. You see that almost 50% of all affordable housing developed in the city of Portland was actually developed with TIF funding. But it has also been an important tool to helping to stabilize community and grow middle-income and market-rate housing within our TIF districts. And what this is flagging on the left-hand side of the slide is, in fact, our investment, our sizable investment in new housing, just kind of a supply of new housing across a breadth of income levels, helped to stabilize rent growth in existing housing units within the district, which is really important when we think about both trying to do inclusive growth, but also stabilization. Next slide, please. So I think Raul's going to go into this at much more detailed level, so you'll see it TIF district by TIF district, but what's important to note here is both the set-aside policy coming into effect in 2005, 2006, getting updated in the mid-teens, and that that has, through a 30 and then 45% set-aside, resulted in 50% of all regulated affordable units in Portland being funded and supported through tax agreement finance. Next slide, please. But we also know that TIF investments can have unintended and negative impacts and do harm to communities if we're not intentional about how our investments occur, particularly on communities of color. And what this slide shows is that we, what we know about what the impacts were through some of our investments in the Interstate TIF District to the Black and African-American communities of North Northeast, and what you see in the map on the right is the displacement of the Black and African-American community largely to East Portland, and that's what you see in the darker purple. And so we have to be intentional as we're moving forward and thinking about who benefits from our investments, as well as where, how and where we're placing our investments. Next slide, please, Justin. So again, we took these three findings and added also kind of the importance of building community trust through better accountability and transparency, as well as leveraging state and federal dollars, so not just thinking about TIF as the only public tool that we're bringing to bear, but how are we leveraging it to match state and federal dollars to positive impact? And that fundamentally kind of created a foundation for our exploration process that you'll hear more about today. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Raul for the set-aside policy.
Thank you so much. So you can go ahead to the next slide, please. For the record, my name is Raul Brusel Mendez, he-or-they pronouns. I work for the Portland Housing Bureau. I am a policy coordinator, and I am going to talk to you today about the set-aside policy. As the name implies, the Affordable Housing Set Aside Policy are a set of dollars, close to half, as Lisa said, of resources that are generated through TIF that are set aside for affordable housing, construction, preservation, and development. So one of the major ways that the city has prioritized preventing displacement in TIF districts is through this policy. As Lisa said, close to half of the production that we've done since the year 2000 has been through this Affordable Housing Set Aside Policy. The history of this policy goes back to 2006, where it was originally 30% of revenue that was generated was set aside, which increased in 2015. We have a periodic review, which we will be getting to in a little bit, but we also use these funds from TIF to leverage with other resources that are generated through HUD, through the Portland and the Metro Housing Bond, but want to reiterate that with sort of the expiration of some of these resources, TIF is one of the main ways that we are funding affordable housing in the city of Portland. And so, yeah, some of the new formations of the TIF districts are focused on increasing housing production alongside economic development as the two main prongs of preventing displacement. So our continued work together makes, sort of prioritizes that we will be doing that in the future. So one thing that I should mention is that the 45% is not across individual TIF districts, but rather cumulatively across all of TIF districts. Next slide, please. So the next thing to flag here is that the main difference between the projections and the actuals of the start date of the TIF here exclude some of those TIF districts that you see at the top of the chart. So those are TIF districts that expired before the Affordable Housing set-aside went up to 45%. And so as you can see here, some of the actuals represent about 40% of housing across all TIF districts has been set aside, which the target being 45%. We have some remaining funds in some of these TIF districts, specifically Interstate and I believe Central East Side, that are going to be allocated in order to hit those targets. The other piece is that, yep, the 20, the forecasts go into 2028 and 2029, and those are slightly above 45%, just rounded up. are slightly above 45%, just rounded up. Next slide, please. And here you can see some of the remaining TIF resources in each of the districts, as the chart might suggest. These TIF districts, some of these smaller amounts are TIF districts that are either expiring or ending, and the larger amounts are ones that we have either allocated, are going to be allocating resources to, or are just coming online, like the Cully District. Next slide, please. So in the six proposed new TIF districts, both in the central city and east, they would have their targets set at 45% each. So that you saw in the previous slide that some of the different targets vary depending on community needs and specific regions. We have heard pretty loudly and clearly from community that folks really want to go, try and stick to the 45% to the extent that we can. So we're trying to prioritize that in TIF districts moving forward to make sure we're hitting that 45% set aside. And in the next 24 months, we'll be working really closely with Prosper, as well as community members, to do a comprehensive review of the set aside policy, see if there's any adjustments needed. And any recommendations we would make would come both to you all, the board, and City Council for approval. So I will hand it off. Oh, yeah.
Justin, you can go to the next slide. So the other thing we wanted to touch on is just some more near term council direction and policy that has informed our exploration process and kind of provided, provided the parameters by which we undertook looking at new TIF districts. So whoa, that is not the next slide. Lasted. Yeah, sorry. So if we could, yeah, exactly. So there are two major strategies that in, clearly because tax agreement finance is largely an economic development and a housing tool, there are two key policies that will guide, that guided our TIF plans and will continue to guide implementation as we move into kind of action planning and any future investments should the board and council approve. The first you are very familiar with, it is Advanced Portland. Tax Agreement Finance has been an important tool in anything from investing in our trade sector industries to grow, to grow quality jobs, things like supporting Vestas moving into their downtown headquarters, to increasing access to capital for entrepreneurs and small businesses through things like our loans and our grant programs. And then acknowledging that this is largely a geographically focused tool that can really help foster vibrant, a vibrant central city and foster a neighborhood commercial district, whether that's through housing, small business, or even some infrastructure or kind of public realm investments. The other key policy that tax agreement finance will be important to through the set aside policy, but also through investments that Prosper can make in middle income or market rate housing is the housing production strategy. As I mentioned, it is literally before council as we speak for their consideration for approval. And in that strategy, that is a mandate by the governor's office to identify a strategy of tools to deliver on the shortfall of units that we have, that I think requires that we deliver someplace to the tune of 10,000 plus new units on an annual basis in the near term. Tax Agreement Finance will be important both for regulated affordable housing, single family home programs that the Housing Bureau offers through to mixed, mixed use and mixed income projects. Next slide, Justin. So knowing that this was an important tool coming out of Advanced Portland and the housing production strategy, about a year ago, mid summer 2023, we went to City Council. We sought their authorization to actually start to take a look at new TIF districts, knowing that a lot of the last generation was expiring. City Council provided us three key elements that created a framework for how we undertook the exploration process. First, they defined the availability of acreage and assessed value between the central city and East Portland that we could use to look at with community. Second, they said that any new TIF districts created should do three things. They should incorporate the lessons learned from the past TIF districts, thus the Echo Northwest, and kind of looking at the Echo Northwest report as an important foundation. They should advance the strategies that are council advanced strategies like Advanced Portland and the Housing Production Strategy. And we should consistently be cognizant of balancing any priorities with the financial impacts to our taxing jurisdictions. So consistently along the way, we have had Multnomah County, as well as the schools, as our partners in, along the process to make sure that we are hearing from them and they are hearing from community about their priorities. And finally, they directed us to come back to council in fall 2024. And so right now we are on the books to go to them in October 2024 with either just an update or plans should the community support new plans. Next slide, Justin. And just to put more fine kind of quantitative detail to that, with the actions that the board would take today through those terminations and amendments, what would be created is that only 3% of the current city's acreage would be in a tax increment finance district. So if we allowed the last generation to retire and conclude based on the actions that are before you today, only 3% would remain. That is largely, again, in North Mac, Cully, Gateway. That would free up because, again, the parameters, you could have 15% of your acreage and your AV in, as a tax increment finance area, that would free up just over 11,000 acres and $9.8 billion. So council directed us to allocate about 7,500 acres to East Portland for the exploration process and $6 billion of assessed value and to start an exploration process looking at, that allowed for 1,500 acres of the central city to be in new TIF districts and $3.8 billion of assessed value. So those became kind of our guiding parameters to how we looked at new TIF districts. Next slide, Justin. But before we jump into the new districts, again, you can't get to that 3% unless we have a set of actions by the board today. And so I will be doing the termination of the eight TIF districts, and then I'll hand it off to Brian for the amending, the amendments. Justin, if you go to the next slide. So what you see here is that same timeline that I shared that kind of reflected on what are our current TIF districts, what status are they? And then you see added to this slide, the terminating districts and the amended districts that are before you today for action. So the terminating districts are Downtown Waterfront, South Park Blocks, Oregon Convention Center, River District, and the NPN districts. And then the amended districts would be the Central East Side, Lentz, and Interstate. Next slide, Justin. We wanted to just spend a moment kind of thinking about like, why can we terminate each of these districts? Where are they at? Just share a bit more detailed information with the board. So the terminating districts, again, South Park Blocks was created back in the eighties, largely to bring new residential to downtown. The success of that was we invested just over $100 million in, in TIF resources, largely actually to a lot of the housing projects that you see along the South Park Blocks, but also investing in PSU and actually the original linkage of the streetcar between Northwest and South Waterfront. There are no remaining just, or there are no remaining resources in that, in that district. The Oregon Convention Center, we invested 165 million, largely in support of the Convention Center, thus the name of the TIF district. But we also invested in important projects like the Blue Mary River Bridge, like the East Side Streetcar Alignment, and then there was also affordable housing investment in the Louisa Flowers Building. There's about 3 million remaining in limited TIF districts. We have a number of existing assets that we need to continue to property manage and steward appropriately in that district. The NPNs, we invested, and it's a subset, it's the kind of the remaining NPNs that were not concluded with Cully. We invested just under 9 million, both in kind of administrative operations support for the NPN organizations, but also in direct grants for small business support. And this is, this was critical to our ability to do a lot of our community economic development work. In Downtown Waterfront, we invested just over 100, we invested around 160 million in TIF resources, key projects that I would highlight that most folks know about, kind of from the eighties through to more recently is Pioneer Place, the Ankeny Blocks Development, which is kind of around Saturday Market and that area, providing actually a permanent home for Saturday Market in Waterfront Park. Affordable housing projects, both preservation as well as new development in Old Town. And then infrastructure improvements like improvements to Waterfront Park, NATO Parkway, and a part of the new Transit Mall when it was put in 15 years or so ago. There is 5 million remaining. That is what you heard Kay speak to today, and so that will now be placed with your approval that is now placed with the Falcon Building. And then last but not least, in the River District, we invested 489 million in TIF resources, largely around the, the Union Station Acquisition and Related Development. Those are the projects we call the Station Place Acquisition and kind of Development. Our partnership with Hoyt Street Properties in redevelopment of the Pearl, as kind of most folks know it, the redevelopment of the Brewery Blocks, the Nines Hotel in Downtown, recruitment and support for Vestas America's headquarters in the Pearl District, a significant number of both new affordable housing development and preservation of affordable housing in some of the units, particularly in parts of Old Town, and then support for the streetcar alignment. There are 27 million, but those are all, all of the resources, and Brian will talk to this a bit more, but all of the resources in River District are firmly committed to Old Town. So, and they are all program income. None of them are TIF resources. They are all program income that came back into the River District as repayment of loans or property sales. With that, I am going to hand it over to Brian.
Thank you, Lisa. Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Director Branham, Brian Moore, Development Manager of Prosper Portland. In order to affect this, we've got to amend a few remaining districts where we still have resources. And those three districts are Interstate Corridor, Central East Side, and Lentz. What we're able to do is release the property from the tax increment portion of the district, retain the resources, and continue to spend those resources according to the plan that was originally adopted. And we're able to do this in a way that allows us to create new districts. And we're, we're separating out some properties where there might have been overlap between old districts and new districts, as well as to access the, the full amount of the AV and acreage that Lisa discussed earlier. So Interstate Corridor, we're retaining about 70 million in TIF resources to continue to implement the North Northeast Action Plan, really focusing on affordable housing and supporting the Black community there, the projects like Williams and Russell and other projects in North Northeast. The boundaries for that district, we're retaining the full boundaries for that district, simply releasing the AV and acreage. In Central East Side, Central East Side and Lentz actually both have a slightly different situation. In Central East Side, still there's additional resources available, focusing on the workshop blocks and reserving a portion of near term property sales to support that portions of the Central East Side that are not going to have access to resources because they will no longer be in a, in a TIF district. And the Central East Side is, the boundary is being adjusted in order to accommodate the new Central East Side Corridor District. And, and then in Lentz, there's an additional or a remaining 23 million in resources. The goal for that is to continue investing in housing, particularly around the Lentz Town Center, on projects that you may be aware of around 92nd and Herald, as well as to continue to support small businesses in the reduced boundaries of the district. And again, similarly to the Central East Side, we're intending to use some of the near term property sales as a reserve to continue to fund programs like the PIP program in the portions of the district that will no longer be served by a TIF district. In Lentz, it's a little bit more pronounced because the Foster Corridor will be fully removed from any TIF district. And then along 82nd Avenue through Lentz, that would be part of the new 82nd Avenue District. Right. The exciting part, creating new, new, six new TIF districts. We can go to the next slide. So as you know, the creation of six new TIF districts is, is really the big piece of what we're bringing forward. And once the City Council directed us last summer to explore the creation of new TIF districts, the big lift was community engagement. And so in East Portland, we teed up steering committee and working groups. For Central City, we set up an exploration committee that had subcommittees. Both of those engagement processes happened in parallel. And that came to a head with a working group or committee votes last month. And those votes were to move forward the package that we have that we're presenting today. And so here we are today with our presentation on the 28th. And then moving forward, we'll begin the consult and confer period. So that's the formal engagement process of our peer public agencies, the taxing agencies. Now, as Lisa said, we've been working with them all along, so it's not going to be a surprise for them. This is the formal legislated requirement for us to, to engage with them. And so we're looking, looking ahead to presentations to Multnomah County Commission in September with planning commissions and meetings and a recommendation from the Planning Commission, sort of spanning September and October with the decision by City Council happening across two meetings in late October on the 23rd and 30th. Next slide. So the community engagement was no small feat. I've heard people say that hundreds of hours were put into this effort, and I was doing some quick math, and I, I don't doubt that it was actually thousands of hours when you, when you take into account everyone who is involved in the process. We had 95 steering committee members from the community participating in the process across both the central, the central city and the East Portland efforts. 65 committee meetings happened since last summer on this effort. In East Portland, we had support from a really phenomenal community, community based staff person, Pollard Bird, who happens to be here today. Big thanks to her and her great efforts. She really won over the community by her enthusiasm and engagement, and she put together videos on the TIF exploration process and was fantastic support. In the central city, we also did extensive engagement. We hosted open houses, we facilitated surveys, we received, you know, easily over 300 points of feedback from the community on the top, on, on the topic, as well as engaging more directly with 12 different central city, community led partnerships. So, you know, presentations that were made with other organizations that are based in the central city. And similarly, in East Portland, we had partnerships with community based organizations, 25 different community based organizations. Next slide. Potential outcomes. As we all know, predicting the future is a game of chance at best, but the community really wanted to have clear outcomes to serve as guidelines for Prosper to move forward in implementation. And so, starting with the 45% set aside as the baseline, we're expecting 4,500 to 8,000 units to be constructed using those resources. And then in economic development, with the, with the remainder of the resources, split between economic and urban development and infrastructure, we're really looking to see 1,600 to 2,400 small businesses served with 20 to 35,000 jobs supported in, in terms of economic and urban development. And then $384 million is being reserved really to leverage infrastructure in the TIF districts. And the split is, it's interesting because it varies from district to district. There's some flexibility in exactly how percentages are allocated between economic development and infrastructure. And the community was very interested in seeing, particularly in East Portland, seeing TIF dollars used. TIF dollars used not as a replacement for previous commitments by the city to make investment, infrastructure investment, but as an opportunity to leverage funds. Next slide. So I will pass it on to Catherine Hartinger to speak more specifically about East Portland.
Thank you. So many, I feel like we should just pass the baton down the table. Yeah, so Catherine Hartinger, Project Manager, Prosper Portland. Good afternoon, everybody. I use she/her pronouns. Is it, is that better? Okay. Before I dig into East Portland, much as Lisa did early in acknowledging folks who are not at the table, I just want to call attention to our wonderful program coordinator, Kiana Ballow. Yeah, the two folks from our immediate team who are not at the table are Paula, who you just heard about, and you'll hear more about in a couple minutes, and then Kiana, and they have both been really critical to this work. Okay, next slide. So not to bury the lead, this is kind of where we are. So for East Portland, we are bringing forward three districts today for your consideration. So you have 82nd Avenue area there in the yellow. The Sumner Park Rose Argay Columbia Corridor District up in the brown, that we are trying to make the initialization Space stick as opposed to SPAC. So we would love your support in that. And then thirdly, in the purple, we have the East of 205 District. In the table, you will see kind of what Lisa was mentioning earlier about the acreage and assessed value caps that City Council asked us to stay underneath. And so as you can see, we got close to both, which was kind of the intention, but we did stay underneath them. Next slide. So a little bit on how we got here. So you'll see some photos here of different engagement events. But I really wanted to start with the NPIs, which we've talked about earlier. In a lot of ways, TIF exploration is really kind of an evolution of the work that they began and the relationships and capacity that they helped build in those communities. And so in East Portland, not surprisingly, each of those three districts is anchored by at least one of these organizations. So on 82nd, we have the Jade District. In Park Rose, we have Historic, excuse me, in space, we have Historic Park Rose. And in East of 205, we have both Division Midway Alliance, as well as the Rosewood Initiative. I also want to acknowledge folks at EPAP from the East Portland Action Plan. There are a number of community plans that, over the years, have actually asked for us to do an exploration of TIF as a way to fund identified community needs in East Portland. East Portland Action Plan was one of those. And the advocate at the time, JR Lilly, actually started convening a group of stakeholders and neighborhood advocates about a year before we actually started the formal process, really to start learning more about what was happening in Cully and how we might be able to do that in East Portland. So really, I just want to acknowledge these organizations that this work really stands upon. Next slide. So the structure of the exploration, we actually had four advisory bodies running concurrently, which is why that number of advisory body meetings is so high. And so on the left, we had an East Portland-wide Steering Committee. This body was appointed by Commissioner Rubio and really had a broader East Portland perspective. So they were charged, kind of early in the process, with helping guide how we were going to conduct public engagement. They were also charged with helping us figure out how to deal with issues that apply to cross districts. So for example, if you recall, the City Council direction allocated 7,500 acres and $6 billion to East Portland, but how that was divided up amongst the three districts was a conversation we had with the Steering Committee. So they had a lot of a role early on, and they actually did have a role at the very end as well. They were charged with kind of taking plans, if they were forwarded by the working groups, and voting on whether or not they aligned with that City Council guidance. So they had a really strong role in the beginning and in the end, and provided guidance throughout the process. On the right side, we have the three working groups. And you'll see the asterisks. I want to call special attention to these folks. We had two folks on each working group who also sat on the Steering Committee. And this was intentional so that the work wasn't really happening in a vacuum, that there were natural kind of communication lines amongst the different groups. And so each of those folks was attending three or four meetings a month. And each of those meetings was two hours long, so super appreciate their time. The working groups were selected through an open call process. And this is really where kind of the geographics, geographically specific, kind of deep knowledge of those areas came forward. And so it was really these working groups that were charged with the actual kind of exploration processes, kind of co-creating plans with staff. And really, they were empowered to decide as a group through a vote whether to move forward, or whether to wait and ask for more time, or whether to just stop and say, this isn't the right tool for our community. Okay, next slide. So just to come back to that Steering Committee alignment vote before we go into kind of the specifics of the three districts, on the left, you'll see kind of the guidance that we've already talked about a few times from City Council, so I won't repeat that. But of the folks from the Steering Committee who were able to attend that final vote, it was a unanimous vote that the plans did align with City Council guidance. The abstentions were from Director Brannum of the county, and then the PHB Director, who did not feel as appropriate to vote. So there was a unanimous vote at the end that the plans all did align with that guidance. Next slide. I'm going to hand it over to Roger to talk about the broader engagement process.
Hi, everyone. Roger Gonzalez. I use pronouns like he and they. I am a project manager with Prosper Portland. I was the lead project manager supporting the space, the Sumner Park Rose Argay Columbia Corridor Working Group, which was formerly known as the Park Rose Columbia Corridor Working Group. So it's really odd to look at this slide and think about how our year of engagement has been condensed down to just some real basic points here. And in some of my favorite photos, one of Paula Byrd, our community-based project manager, who's sitting in the back, recently celebrated a birthday, has not confirmed that they're Virgo. Their ad bird lady helped us do this brief informational video and community survey that we had translated into several languages, seven at present. We're still actually collecting the feedback for those, but really what we're talking about is shifting things towards the action planning phase. So that phase in which we're anticipating that you all, our City Council, have approved and created these districts, and we're still able to secure kind of feedback from folks so that as we continue the engagement, because this is not the only engagement we will do, we will do engagement over the next 30 years, that's going to be super important information to receive and to share as we continue to prioritize the spending over the next three decades. We also had a number of open houses, as you had mentioned or had heard from Catherine, from the Neighborhood Prosperity Networks. Each of those four that are sitting within the geographically specific exploration areas were also partners in this work. So they helped host open houses or other activities for us to engage with folks. Paula herself had a number of one-on-one conversations. It was super important to kind of distinguish the two sides of the engagement, those that were sort of community project manager-led and those that were city-led, is something that we tried out in the Cully process, found that it was actually a really helpful way of complementing one another, where we would, we meaning the city, would kind of do some of that traditional civically infrastructured stuff. So you see that we had our informational pamphlets, we had those in 17 languages, everything from like Swahili to Karen. We had virtual office hours that we hosted. Those were every Thursday, every first and third Thursday of the month, just for an hour, hanging out on Zoom, mostly by ourselves. But every now and then, we'd have folks pop in and some really spicy ones towards the end. We'd had a number of interested parties' emails that we sent, thanks be to Kiana Ballow, who is also sitting in the back there, who ultimately took that over from me and did a much better job at making sure that we provided that kind of information to folks so that people could keep up with where we were at. They also provided really nice sort of static pieces of snapshots for people to be able to see where this thing went over time. We too had our own one-on-one conversations. As we each, the three of us sitting here, Dana, you'll hear from in a second, were able to have our own individual conversations with the working group members, Steering Committee members, or members of the public who had something to say to us, or in some of this engagement process, which at some point, I think everyone here kind of touched in some capacity. We, as we had mentioned, these community organization briefings and partnering with a number of culturally and community-based organizations to do outreach or just talk to folks. This unicorn you see here is actually someone who is with PDX Saints Love. They serve unhoused residents. They're based on 82nd Avenue. One of the things that we had wondered about was how do we kind of authentically and genuinely engage unhoused residents? And Crystal Delanti, who's the executive director, came up with a community barbecue and a community arts sort of vision for this process. So we did that. And thanks to Raul and Catherine and Dana, we received, I think, 90 surveys from unhoused residents and from residents in that area, talking about what they want to see. And I think ultimately, that's the most important piece. These numbers, the stuff you see on this PowerPoint, really all drive at what we did, but it doesn't talk about what we heard, which is some of the most important stuff. And you'll note on the next slide that there are a number of things that I don't think are very surprising that people will have said, that people that we heard across the three districts, and we'll dig into some of the specifics around each of those, but it's no surprise, I think, that folks want to see support for existing residents and businesses. One of the main reasons we got into this was on the stabilization aspect of this effort, which is how do you actually keep people in their communities and their neighborhoods? How do you keep businesses and the things that folks and the services that folks love to see in their neighborhoods? How do you keep that there while you give them the other stuff that they said they wanted? And in particular, in an area of the city, which for four decades has talked about the lack of investment and the investment that is owed to them. So they want, just like everyone else in this city, they want to see their neighborhoods, they want to see it, and they want to see it in the future, they want to be there, they want to thrive, and they want us to see new growth, things that they can actually access. And so one of the most important and key aspects of that is housing opportunities, not just affordable housing, not just market rate housing, but seeing housing opportunities so that everyone has an actual ability to stay in there or to find homeownership opportunities and hang out in some of the most beautiful and passionate and community-oriented places in our city. They also, to that point, really have this desire for community connection that creates pride and belonging. I'll speak specifically for that space area in particular, where there's just this kind of thread about who would want to come here, who would want to invest here. And I think there's this little bit of this that comes with that physical built form, which is that people have a pride and a sense of belonging in the places that they live and that they exist, and that they want to actually experience that, they want others to see that too. And of course, you know, you can't talk about the economic development aspect of this if you're not talking about those middle and living wage jobs that are actually accessible to existing residents, seeing opportunities on the industrial sides, on the commercial side for entrepreneurs, for home-based businesses, to actually be able to sell their wares or their services, have that kind of visibility in the same way that a brick and mortar spot does, really wanting to see more, just more, more than car-centric, nothing against the car-centric businesses that are staples of many of our corridors in East Portland, but they want to see more than just those car-centric places of business. They want to see thriving small businesses, affordable shops, grocery stores. Again, this big question for East Portland was around that targeted infrastructure improvements, how much of this stuff, how much of these dollars do we want to see pay for those kinds of infrastructure needs that we know are present, when we know that the city, they have been paying those taxes year over year for decades, promised basic services like paved roads and sidewalks? So there is some allotment here for those targeted infrastructure improvements. And the last thing is, they don't want to stop, they don't want us to stop talking with them, to working with them, to sharing with them the knowledge about how this stuff works, how we work, how they can influence and impact the decisions that we make over the next three years with their money, with those property taxes that we're paying into this. So they want to see engagement opportunities, they want to see education so that people can be brought along, they want youth involved, and they want to see their communities in a leadership position. So that is something that we've heard across all of those districts. And now, I think I am turning it to Dana. Catherine, back to Catherine.
Thank you. You'll see the commonalities that Roger was describing in these kind of allocations of funds across the different buckets of work across all three of the districts. So when we're talking about anti-displacement, stabilization, inclusive growth, I think one of the things that was discussed a lot was that affordable housing, housing development needs to happen hand in hand with economic development. Those two things have to come together. And so you'll see roughly similar kind of allocations to those two buckets, and then some smaller allocations to infrastructures, has already been discussed, to kind of leverage some of those, particularly around safety and connectivity. Next slide. So 82nd, the 82nd Avenue area is up first, so I was the lead project manager on that. And so this is a little bit more detail on the map. So it does run the full length of 82nd Avenue. The northern part is actually captured in the Space District, but the intent is to have the full corridor in a TIF district. You'll see to the west of 82nd, these kind of commercial corridor fingers, which really, there was a lot of conversation around aiming to develop kind of 20-minute neighborhoods at those major intersections. And so having both the north-south and east-west corridors within the TIF district was seen as kind of critical to creating those centers. Super intentional about a mix of zoning, making sure we're capturing a lot of multifamily zoning, but also some single-family zoning for those homeownership opportunities. One of the shifts that came with engagement was the kind of hook on the bottom, which the Lower Southeast Rising Plan, it was a new plan that was adopted earlier this year that designated a new neighborhood center that kind of straddles 72nd and 82nd along Flavelle. So that Bretton Wood Darlington Neighborhood Center. And so we did kind of pull that into the boundary. And then we excluded, you know, schools and some areas with higher value, single-family homes that were largely kind of owner-occupied. So what are people excited about? I think there is a lot of excitement around homeownership as a path to wealth building. And so prioritizing some of those affordable dollars, particularly early in the life of the district for homeownership, home repair. There's a desire for better multimodal connections that build on the 82nd Avenue infrastructure and transit investments with that jurisdictional transfer of the corridor. There's a lot of work that is happening immediately on the corridor, and there's a desire to kind of see what can happen if we extend that out into the neighborhoods and commercial corridors a little bit more. There's interest in looking at the multitude of existing motels along the corridor and flipping those either for housing or some other community use. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. And then, let's see, so more neighborhoods serving retail and services along 82nd. I think this is something you'll hear everywhere, but I think when it comes to 82nd, it's really kind of a through way. And folks who live there really want to see things that are there for them, that they can walk to and really embrace as part of their community. Again, remediation and redevelopment of large underdeveloped sites. On the left, I think this was the site that was described the most, it's the site immediately across from McDaniel High School. And then there are a lot of car dealerships that are going out of business. And so there's a lot of opportunity with very large underdeveloped sites. Tree canopy and landscaping along the corridor, there's a lot of heat islands happening along the corridor, and it's, you know, there's been in the news that folks along the corridor several years ago, a number of folks died. And so there's a lot of interest in cooling the corridor and getting some more pervious surfaces, et cetera, and trees. And then there's a desire for, you know, more 24-hour vibrancy to reduce some of the safety and quality of life issues. We heard a lot from folks, particularly on the northern end of the corridor, about, you know, sex work and some of the activity that sometimes accompanies that, and really just a desire for everything from, you know, pedestrian-scale lighting to more businesses along the corridor that would be open in the evenings just to activate them. Next slide. So our working group, there were 13 folks there. And so of those, 10 voted to proceed and move the draft plan that we developed in co-creation forward. Two voted to wait, mostly around just, you know, a desire for further community engagement. And then there was also, I think, a desire to further allocate some of those buckets of money and get into more detail, which I think comes in the next phase of the process. But yeah, overwhelming vote from the working group to proceed. Next slide. Ending it to Dana.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Chair, Commissioners and Director Brannum. My name is Dana Declan. I'm a program manager here at Prosper Portland. My name is Dana Declan, I'm a program manager here at Prosper Portland, and I was the lead of the East 205 district. And again, giving us some overview of the boundary that we, first thing that the working group really tackled was, you know, we had, you know, a large space of East Portland around, on the east side of 205, and how do you carve out the space that really kind of felt most connected? And it was, you know, thinking around the two neighborhood prosperity initiatives that kind of focus in that area, both the Rosewood Initiative and the Division Midway Alliance that has been spending the last 12-plus years really creating capacity and community connection, really focusing on 122nd. We didn't make the whole length of 122nd, but did get up to Halsey and connected to where Gateway stops. That actually came from our community engagement conversation to really ensure that the businesses in that space who had wished to be served in Gateway could get served. So that was a real, I think that was a good win. And then we took 122nd all the way down to Foster, based on conversation with the working group. Division goes all the way from the freeway to the city line, and the east of this boundary gets us the entire city line from Gleason down to Powell. That was a really, a big priority for the working group, as well as the steering committee had given guidance around that, thinking about the far end of our city. And then the only thing we needed to pull out to make art, to fit within our acreage cap, was the high school for David Douglas School. And so that felt like a kind of a win-win. So that is the only pocket in the middle. Next slide, please. So people are really excited about the attention, right? There's a, there's a lot of desire for support and resources to be in East Portland, certainly supporting our existing homeowners that are in space, that are, could benefit from home repair loans, and, and then new homeownership opportunities is really, was flagged, along with the mix of multifamily housing. To really serve family, the, like, the whole depth of need, I think, is, was really flagged. Affordable childcare is absolutely in every community that I hear, not surprising, that's a, that's a big one, right? And, and then the walkability. So as we know, with the annexation of East Portland into our city, there's a lo, it's a long process to get enough sidewalks and streets. And so it's been flagged in all of our districts, the connectivity and the safe routes to school was always flagged. And so thinking about how can that happen in parallel with the projects that are already happening, maybe supporting that in some way, but not having it take a huge amount of the investment around stabilizing community was really important. Another flag was like having the ability to have a shared commissary kitchen where people could, you know, make their food products and get out to community. That was really an important option, was having a commercial kitchen that small businesses could utilize without having to have their own space. Next slide. Spaces for the youth to have a safe place, to have activity, was, as well as cultural spaces and gathering spaces, kind of the variety of community-centered recreation was flagged often in our, both in our working group as well as all the community engagement that we did. Multicultural maker spaces, places where community members could gather and sell their wares, lot of people are doing work from home, you know, making their products and needing a place to get out and sell their product. Incubator spaces, those kinds of like energy in getting small business to have places to sell their stuff. And then, you know, multilingual signage, place, kind of directional signage is always something that people really want to feel like there's a large variety and diversity in our community, and wanting to make sure that people see themselves in community was highlighted. Next slide, please. So when we got to the vote, we had 11 working group members who voted to proceed with this process, which we are here now. We had one who said, would really like to have a little more time, but we don't have that time. And then we had one abstain and one who did not respond to the vote. So we definitely had a majority of the East 205 working group members to say, please move forward, so, thank you. Next slide.
All right, well, we're back to space. So it's probably good to just start with why that name. So as I'd mentioned before, this was previously called the Park Rose Columbia Corridor District. And, you know, one of the things that's so human about this is that folks were saying, you know, where, where are we at in this? Why isn't Sumner kind of named in this? Why isn't Argate Terrace expressly named in this? And I think part of this, and we'll get into it particularly when we talk about the vote, is that there has been somewhat of a, a little bit of distrust from some of the folks with the city and a need to repair some of the relationships that are happening there. And so one of the real basic things that came up here was, we want to see ourselves reflected in this name, we want to know that these investments are not exclusive to any single one user in this space, which I think, again, is an entirely human kind of perspective to take. So one of the last changes that came up and why this name was never brought up before was because it came up last. And we made that change, and it seemed perfectly fine, actually, to the working groups who said, you know, I know it's a mouthful, but it's nice to see all of the different neighborhoods and communities reflected in that name. So we are with space here. So much like in, in the same fashion as the other proposed TIF districts on the east side, we are beginning with the anchoring of Historic Park Rose, which is an NPN district, wanting to see that as one of the mainstays here, including that full length of Sandy Boulevard. And it helps you bridge that west and east of I-205 kind of areas with Sumner and that little corner of Roseway down at the bottom there with Park Rose and Argate Terrace, as well as our industrial lands to the north. We would include areas of the Columbia Slough, so you see that there are actually, and it's harder to see on this map, but there are some access points there to that southern slough portion, which was really important to the steering committee members and working group members as well. And this one is also quite unique, and then we both have residential, commercial, and industrial lands. It's the only one of the districts here that will have that, and so that has played an important role in shaping what exactly this would look like, ending at 1578 acres, meeting the assessed value cap, and of course, hitting that maximum indebtedness of $310 million. Next slide, please. What exactly are people talking about when we're talking about the kinds of investments that we want to make here? I think the first thing we ought to start with and why you see it here are those buffers between industrial and residential land, that there is a desire for mutually beneficial development, folks wanting to see and understand that these are, they are neighbors, they are right next to one another, separated only by Sandy Boulevard. And it's important to see that, you know, residents here don't take on the brunt of industrial development that, you know, for so long they've viewed as this negative impact thing to them. And we do think this tool and also the premise of this entire process has been that we can envision positive mutually beneficial development that occurs that isn't about one at the cost of the other. So wanting to see those buffers in there, wanting to see recreational improvements to publicly accessible open spaces, not just at the extremes where you have to drive by car, but that you could actually roll, stroll, walk, bike to, whatever it is, but be able to get there, including the Columbia Slough. So that's why you'll see some of these funky little strips that kind of, kind of extend out from the top portions of the district itself. Public spaces, again, enjoy neighborhood amenities, not having to constantly hear the traffic on Sandy, but maybe behind that commercial corridor, there's some spaces for folks to be able to just sit and hang out and have a meal. So those are all things that I think in the future, folks will be tremendously excited about. Next slide, please. And not surprising, again, with that industrial side sitting right there with those employers, those at times lower barrier entry positions or lower barrier jobs to attain, is workforce training centers and wanting to see opportunities for additional skill sets or acquiring certifications. I know the school themselves have also talked about a workforce training center, seeing if that there's a possibility there for some third-party operator, just have that opportunity for folks to leave what it is that they're doing and find another opportunity where they can, again, make those middle-wage jobs and have those within their own neighborhood and not have to travel to outside of the region or elsewhere to get that job. Remediation and redevelopment of sites along Sandy Boulevard, I'm thinking of spots like at Sandy and 112, spots that have been long vacant and fenced up, that folks want to see something happen with. We had mentioned the car-centric shops that are there, that's also a big one, that folks want to see kind of redevelop. We won't talk about pro lodges, but I think that's been part of the, the drive of wanting to see some of this, is, is wanting to see that positive development, not wanting to see it come at the expense of the neighbors themselves. And then when we get to the affordable retail shops, I mentioned to this last time, we were talking with Park Rose High Youth with the Pathfinder Club there, who, Pathfinder Club is, it's an organization that works with youth that have been impacted by deportation, detention, and incarceration. And Catherine and I went and spoke to this club, and I was really blown away, they kept bringing up Kmart as a, as a shop that they wanted to see. And I've been to Kmart, and I've not been since like 20 years ago. And I said, why do you want a Kmart? What, what is it about the Kmart that you want to see so bad? And they said, there were just like a lot of things that you could look at, and it was affordable, and it was a space that you could kind of like hang at. And I just thought, oh, that makes a ton of sense, that you would want a, like, that one-stop shop where you could actually buy stuff and, you know, not have to worry about, you know, they were talking about how the Target is so far away at Cascade Station. And so, anyway, it was just a little bit of insight for me as I'm talking to them about, do you want a skate park? Do you want, what is it that you want? And the two things that they brought up were things at parks for people younger than them, so people under the age of 14. So they weren't thinking about themselves, they were thinking about younger kids and things for them to do, and a place where they could actually just shop and hang out. So it's not, folks aren't asking for the moon here, I think they're asking for very reasonable investments in themselves and their ability to live their lives and do the kinds of things that they want to do. So we can talk more about that. Okay, next slide. So again, this one was a little funkier because we had, we're the only group that also had exploration areas within exploration areas. So we, where the other two districts, the other two working groups came with a boundary at their final vote, our vote was a little different. We had much wonders and curiosity and a lot of really great questions from the working groups that we had to kind of wrestle through to understand what is the, like, some of these nuances were just incredible. And I think part of that came at, how do, how are we certain that you are going to get us what we have asked for? How are we certain that we are not going to just bear the brunt of, you know, bad development or bad investment, or that government, nobody would invest here, which is something that we've heard. So we started with, at the end of our exploration process, are we going to move forward this year, yes or no? Let's just, without a boundary, let's just figure out whether this is something we're going to do. So much of that is coming at the heels of Argate Terrace Neighborhood Association meeting that occurred at about the second-to-last or last week in which we're hosting working group meetings, and they're to vote on the culmination of all that we've been working on. At that Neighborhood Association meeting, we heard that there were four real topics that, that were of concern to the neighbors in Argate Terrace, which were the need to kind of spend more time for education and outreach. Folks wanted, again, you've heard this from me a few minutes ago, folks wanted more information, wanted to understand how this tool works, who's responsible, all that kind of stuff. There's also a desire to see more time to repair some of that relationship with the city and get that kind of continue to go. The fourth is really around that industrial development impact and whether or not that would be a negative to the area. And the fourth really being around concerns over low-income housing, affordable housing, and whether or not that is something that, you know, would negatively impact the neighborhoods. So I'm just conveying to you all what has led us to this moment in which we have to pose the question to the working group sans a boundary at that time, around whether or not we would move forward this year. Seven of the 10 voted to proceed this year, I think they really wanted to see this, they had enough conversation, had enough input. We get down to the actual boundary option, two of those boundary options, options two and option three, would actually allow a neighborhood like Argate Terrace to be excluded at this time, but, but for us to actually go to city council with a package that the working group would move forward and acknowledge that, hey, there's also this request for more exploration time. The voting, the, the working group members that were there actually voted, as you'll see, for option one, which was to maintain the present boundary, which includes the three, four areas that we were talking about, Sumner, Park Rose, Argate, and the industrial lands. And the three that voted to wait also abstained from that vote. And so that is how we landed at today. I'm happy to answer any questions should they come up on that. Otherwise, I am turning it back over to Dana.
So the, like, leaning into our new partnership and co-creation model that we elevated with the Cully TIF district, where they codified the community leadership committee in the TIF plan, we're doing the same in the three East Portland TIF districts. So that, that co-creation model is codified in the governance charter that's attached to the TIF plan. It's a joint leadership committee to give guidance and direction for both Prosper Portland and the Housing Bureau, so there's some weird nuance there. Each of the districts have 13 members that have direct connection to the districts. They are individuals who can represent the priority communities in the district rather than their personal or organizational interests. They're members who understand and support the goals of the plan, understand the need to straddle from the goal of community stabilization and the shared prosperity goal, community-centered investments to stabilize residents and businesses while fostering that inclusive growth and increased housing production. Reflect the full diversity of the community, and then to ensure that a diverse range of knowledge and experience is brought to that table to help us understand, you know, make sure that people can help guide our conversations through lived experience as well as professional experience. Next slide. So the committee will advise the decision-makers, both you all, our director at Prosper Portland as well as at the Housing Bureau, around providing recommendations to move forward with spending as well as oversight over the life of the district. The first thing that we'll be doing is the action plan process, which is a five-year action plan process that helps identify the priority budget, identifying the projects, and kind of helping us prioritize budget spend, kind of that process. They'll also be able to help with providing guidance and highlighting the needs of new programming. So if we have a goal to support a community and we don't have a program that can help fulfill that, they could help us work through that process. And then, in the case of, let's see here, okay, then we get into like when we need to do an amendment, they will help with that process. We're not doing that, you know, behind the curtain, this is a full, full transparency process. And then the last piece, the districts really were talking about, were all individual districts with their own kind of place-based needs, but there's some lessons learned and some process that they would like to do some strategic convenings throughout the life of these districts. And so thinking about how often would that be, how does that process happen? And so thinking about how often would that be, how does that process happen? That's kind of a nuance that we didn't dig into, but that is certainly something that people really flagged for us. Next slide, and I think we go to Sarah.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Harple. I'm a senior project manager with Prosper Portland. Before I begin on Central City, I have to second the shout-out to Kiana Balo and the and the audience who helped with this process as well. I think of Central City and East Portland as siblings. We share some DNA, but we charted our own path based on our own kind of personalities, needs, expectations. So I'm going to walk through this. I'm also going to leverage my strength as a speed talker and help move through this at kind of a high pace or high level. So please do stop me if you have questions. I know we're running behind time, and we have some invited guests who has a hard stop, so I want to be sensitive to that as I move through comments. The Central City exploration process was grounded in the direction by city council to advance, advance Portland. So we took some of those goals and objectives and really organized them into the four focus areas you see here. It was also geographically grounded in work done by Eco Northwest that really looked at post-pandemic health of our Central City sub-districts. They use data to organize each sub-district into three typologies of reinvent, reinvigorate, and retain. Each of the districts you see circled here, with the exception of Central East Side, fell into that category that had struggled the greatest in a post-pandemic environment. Central City fared slightly better in that middle category. These areas also are informed by our known either structural imbalance of jobs and housing and kind of part of the reason why they struggled post-pandemic or and/or the potential for housing that exists in some of our large-scale opportunity sites around Lloyd Mall, the Omsi District you heard about today, the Broadway Quarter, which we have been moving forward. Next slide, please. We convened a 40-member steering committee. They met both as a steering committee. Over the past year, they had five meetings, but we also organized them into three subcommittees, and each subcommittee met three times. The steering committee has a vast range of expertise around economic development, business retention, recruitment, housing production, and a spectrum of income levels, as well as those large-scale sites. And so we organized them into those three focus areas to also inform our work throughout the process. Next slide, please. I think about our kind of exploration process as a funnel. So we started really looking and mapping out existing conditions, building upon work that had been coming out of the Gummer's Task Force, Advance Portland, the Central City Analysis by Eco Northwest. So really cataloging existing conditions, both qualitatively and quantitatively, looking at investment priorities, narrowing down into very specific opportunity sites with star stickers and post-its and markers, looking at the property mix. And that was important because as we look at valuation and projected growth within the district, wanting to be conservative about having a balance of uses and both needs within the district, and then staying ended those AV and acreage caps that we have walked through previously. I will note that the kind of evolution of scenarios you see here were informed by an early decision by Albina Vision Trust and the Trailblazers. They were part of our exploration process. They elected to not have their area included within a Tiff District at that time, but remained at the table with us through the exploration process, and we continue in partnership with them for future exploration should they feel like that that's an appropriate fit. In our different scenarios, we tested the balance of AV and acreage on both sides of the river to one extreme of what if we just focus on downtown? There's sentiment of you just have to get downtown right before you do anything else. What does that look like to on the other side, really embracing the waterfront on the east side, and what are those opportunities? And then, you know, the compromise in the middle. We also tested the relationship between Old Town and Downtown and whether that made sense to be separate districts, and if so, at what size, or really did working together as a single district make more sense, both in terms of governance, but also in terms of resources available. And ultimately, there was strong support for a single district on the west side as we looked forward. And then, as Brian mentioned earlier in the presentation, you can see in the bottom map in the very light yellow, we were also playing around with what does it look like for the amended Central East Side to still continue to service some of that area relative to a new district? Next slide, please. So the three districts before you today in the Central City are the West Side Tiff District, the Lloyd Holiday, and the Central East Side Corridor to be differentiated between the Central East Side District. On the west side, it looks a little bit like Swiss cheese. We had to kind of take out specific high AV properties to stay under that cap. Focus on the west side also included the extension of the park blocks, both north and south, and the future green loop, the importance of the retail core, embracing the waterfront. And we had a lot of conversation around where are their bright spots today in the Central City and how do we leverage those? How do we create connections between them? So whether that's Powell's, the retail core, Old Town, how are we getting people to and through the district, and what is the kind of the regional purpose of this district moving forward? The Lloyd Holiday Tiff District, the western boundary was informed by continued conversations with AVT and the Trailblazers of where to appropriately draw that boundary, as well as you'll see kind of the little notch on that western boundary, there is an affordable housing opportunity there owned by Holy Rosary, so that they asked to be included in the district. This district is grounded by the opportunity with the Lloyd Center as well as the Regal Cinema opportunities. Also then to the southern end of the district with the Portland Bottling Industrial Property that needs reinvestment and kind of reimagining and connectivity across 84. The Central East Side Corridor is grounded with the Omsi District that you heard about today and kind of leveraging the prior investment in the Orange Line as well as chasing the kind of MLK Grand and Stark Avenue Commercial Corridors. And then we kind of balanced, we had a lot of conversation about what's the, how far up do we embrace the river on the east side, knowing that that was a priority in both sides, but also looking at what were truly the opportunities that were provided. This was a conversation with hard decisions that in the Central City, the assessed value cap is very real and very challenging, the C of the spot removal. You may hear comments around, you know, why weren't certain properties included? Two challenges. One is the need for districts to be contiguous, so some properties were not close to a proposed district, and so that would make it challenging for inclusion. The other is assessed value varies significantly on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and so it's not as easy as taking a couple blocks here and putting a couple blocks there. So by way of example, there's interest including more of the Pearl District in the West Side Tiff District. Doing so would require us to forego entirely the Lloyd Holiday District, entirely the Central East Side Corridor District, and a part of the West Side District to incorporate that small amount. So it really is a parcel-by-parcel analysis of what what we could include and grounded in that data of kind of what districts had the need and the housing production potential. Next slide, please. Some way to East Portland, each of the plans lays out kind of what are the eligible investments and allocates a percentage of resources to those. So you will see the 45% affordable housing set aside is consistent across all three districts, with the remaining 55% of resources being administered by Prosper Portland for economic development, urban development, and infrastructure. There is a greater investment in infrastructure on the Central City districts, both because of the need of infrastructure in those large-scale sites to unlock some of those master plan areas, and as well as in the west side, really a strong emphasis around placemaking, waterfront park. And so there was an eagerness also to see kind of investment or infrastructure investment there as well. Next slide, please. I'm going to spend a couple of slides just on each district at a high level. The west side, these areas were restricted for inclusion again because of its kind of status as an employment hub, high concentration of office space, high concentration of retail space, the imbalance of housing and jobs was one of the findings of the Eco Northwest analysis of kind of what was impacting its health. We know there are many historic buildings in specific historic districts, particularly in Old Town Chinatown, that are in need of seismic reinvestment to make them able to be occupied and kind of live to their full potential. And really this kind of ever-present question of what is the role of downtown moving forward as we look at change in a hybrid work environment? So what, how do we reimagine it? How is it, how do we invest in placemaking? What makes this area special? As I mentioned, the the support for a single district on the west side. This district has a maximum deadness of $800 million, too. You can see the acreage and assessed value there. Next slide, please. Investment priorities moving forward, we had a lot of conversation around kind of the interrelated nature of retention and recruitment, getting additional residential development downtown, placemaking, the amenities that serve up development, and that kind of that feedback loop and kind of almost a chicken and egg scenario of how do you make these things come to fruition? And so looking at the resources available, you'll see the cash flow here over the next 30 years. The first five years is fairly modest. Our first five-year action planning conversation is really going to have to grapple with the strategic direction of kind of the relationship of these different priorities and how they work together. I will note, and this is true of each of the districts we'll walk through, that the financial modeling was based on a 3% average growth of assessed value, which is what we have traditionally used in Tiff District modeling. For the Central City, we are showing kind of limited long-term borrowing in the first 20 years. So this is a conservative estimate that 10-year, $94 million and by year 10 could be more should the city choose to do borrowing earlier. The Central City Tiff District, again, you've heard about the potential of Omsi. I won't kind of reiterate that, but I can, the significance of that opportunity, as well as we think about the amenities in the district, and again, both for employers and for residents, and the potential of the MLK Grand and Stark Street Commercial Corridors, and the need to invest in industrial and commercial job growth and housing potential within the district. Central East Side Corridor District is unique in that zoning is a much stronger factor of the three Central City districts in kind of what is appropriate investment where. And so balancing both that job creation, industrial and commercial uses with kind of small areas for housing potential and the amenities needed to serve both. Next slide. In our conversations, again, a lot of support for the Omsi development and enthusiasm there. We also heard from kind of employee or employer interests around, there's a lot of interest in multimodal investment, but also the nature of the jobs and the clients that are drawn to some of the businesses. There's also a need for district parking and infrastructure to serve, serve those businesses, as well as some of the connectivity challenges that the railroads proven. So that kind of rose to top as one of the kind of front business investments that we can make to support businesses and employers in the area. Again, strong enthusiasm for embracing the water and connection to the river and the mix of housing along with those amenities to support. And then lastly, the Lloyd Holiday District struggles with, you know, no surprise, hotels have a highly, highly reduced occupancy. With that comes retail vacancies that are rather staggeringly high compared to the rest of, rest of the city, structural imbalance of housing and jobs again in this district as well. This district does pose a lot of potential for mixed income, mixed-use development, again with the Lloyd Center, the Regal Cinema, and then the Portland Bottling on the southern end of the district that I mentioned. And kind of priorities looking forward as we look into action planning, again, support for the Lloyd Center. We talked a lot about how do you stabilize the small businesses that are along the Broadway Widler Cuplet, as well as continue to attract anchor employers that may have formerly had a presence in someplace like the Lloyd Center and their role that the Lloyd Center had played at that time and the importance of that to the district, mix of housing opportunities. Here, placemaking focused a lot on street trees, and how do you embrace the eco-district identity that already exists within this district and leverage that as an asset to support development? And again, some support for infrastructure, particularly on those large-scale sites. Our committee again aligned to that initial direction from city council, and so we, the whole committee voted on all three individually, the districts. We had 20 members present who voted, so it was unanimous support for a mall 20 present for each of the districts. We did have 14 members who were either not present, or they included three of our ex-officio members who abstained from voting. Looking forward, we get questions about kind of like now, so what, now what, what happens? So again, the 55% that of resources that would go to Prosper Portland would be governed by our executive director and this board, and the 45% set aside would be governed ultimately by city council. We are proposing convening ad hoc committees to help create those five-year action plans. The Central City has a lot of capacity and engagement, infrastructure already in place through various committees, and so we heard a lot about, don't create another committee. We did feel a need to kind of create a shared table for action planning work across those committees, but then that ad hoc committee can choose what ongoing governance looks like for that district. And that may depend district by district of whether they do want to have an ongoing committee or would they want to leverage existing tables for kind of ongoing reporting and feedback. Listed here are kind of representation of members who you would anticipate would be involved with us in that ad hoc committee. So both private sector and community representatives from our kind of business chambers, enhanced service districts, community associations, large-scale development, master plan site partners, small businesses, and then across each district, some commonality between our culturally specific chambers, residents, brokers, you know, across the board. So we would, I guess, next slide. If approved, we would move forward with convening that committee early next year and then moving into our action planning process that looks a lot like what we have done for other action plans that have been before you, including Old Town, most recently Gateway. Through that process, we would then, I guess, one of the things that I maybe didn't emphasize enough was that in the Central City, our subcommittees were focused on those thematic interests, so whether it was housing production, economic development. The action planning process would give us then the opportunity to be geographically focused and specific in what those needs are. So our SWOT analysis would be more place-based and specific and focused on the short term in those five-year priorities and knowing what the resources are at that time. And again, as I mentioned, they would determine what their kind of recommendations are for future reporting and oversight.
Thanks, Sarah. And good afternoon. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director Brandon. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO, he/him pronouns. I'll spend the next couple of slides making a couple high-level summary points on the financial impacts of the overlapping taxing jurisdictions. Next slide, thanks. On this slide, we're recapping kind of the the intro on how tax increment works, the growth in assessed value, multiplying to the tax rates of the overlapping taxing jurisdictions creates that tax increment, but also creates forgone revenues for the overlapping taxing jurisdictions. This slide shows the impact, estimated impact of that forgone revenue to the overlapping taxing jurisdictions for general government, city, county, library district, and other districts. That total is estimated to be about $1.6 to $2 billion over the course of 35 years, and this includes an assumption around 3% growth on average per year. The the amount of impact per year is different. It starts out small as tax increment grows and is larger towards the end of the district. The reason why there's a range here is because it depends on the amount of financing to implement the districts. So if there's very little financing, it would take less time to pay off the districts, and therefore the financial impact would be lower. If there is more financing, more long-term bonds, it might take a little bit longer to pay off the districts. That's on the range of 35 years, so between 30 and 35 years. And that creates the impact of closer to $2 billion, but an annual average impact across all the general governments of about $45 to $55 million per year. Next slide, please. The next slide shows impact on K through 12 education dollars. This is quite different because of the dynamic of the state school fund, where the impacts are absorbed statewide by the equalization formula in the state school fund. There's a whole lot of assumptions that build into this because it is a 35-year forecast. So assuming assumptions around state school funding remains constant, and these assessed value growth values are around 3% per year. The impact is about 35, or sorry, $39 to $48 million in total, and about $1.1 to $1.4 million per year on average. And again, that's really due to the statewide impact of the state school fund absorbing some of these impacts. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates in more depth the impact, as shown in green, specifically to the city of Portland and over the first 10 years of the combined six districts. This is compared to what's shown in blue of the returning tax increment from all the terminating and expiring existing districts. So what this illustrates is that over the first 10 years of the six new districts, there's about $71 million in taxes forgone to the City of Portland General Fund, and that compares to about $448 million of taxes returning to the general fund from the expiring districts, so a net of $377. However, just to note that the $448, the returning dollars are largely already incorporated into the city's forecast going forward. So it's really, that green portion is really going to be a net impact to the city's budget and the county's budget going forward. But this illustrates that over the 35 years, there's about a net difference, about $1.3 billion. Next slide, please. I think this is the last slide. This is summarizing next steps. So as mentioned, there's a number of steps if the districts are approved to go forward today, with a consult and confer period of 45 days, the Multnomah County Commission presentation briefing on September 17th, and then September 10th, 24th, October 8th, Planning Commission hearings and recommendations, and then concluding with October 30th for city council. For funding, this would occur in fiscal year, fiscal year '25, '26, so next fiscal year's budget. So if approved, we would begin budgeting these districts as part of the upcoming budget process and incorporating that into the budget. process and incorporating that into the budget, along with PHB. And then finally, engagement, action planning, that would occur spring of this next year, 2025, convening the PDx committees, Central City Action Plan Committees, and then the action plan developments through spring through winter of 2025, and that would go to Board and City Council in a winter of fiscal year '25, '26. Good there.
Great. Thanks very much to everyone. Those are great presentations, and they really brought everything to life. So before we get into questions and comments, we're going to go ahead and have our invited testimony, and then we'll go back to questions and comments. So, but thank you, those were terrific presentations. So we have a number of, yes? Okay, sounds good. Okay, so I'll just read off all the folks who are coming up. Sabrina Wilson from Rosewood MPN in East 205, Josh Pangellian, business owner, 82nd Avenue area, Corky Collier, Columbia Corridor, space, Michael Lopez-Sarau, Park Rose School District, space, Margaret Salazar, Reach CDC and Affordable Housing, Jill Sherman, Edlin &amp; Company, Central East Side Corridor, Carolyn Holcomb, CEIC, Central East Side Corridor, Monique Claiborne, GPI, West Side, Peter Andrews, PMC, Central City Committee, West Side. And then, let's see, we have some additional testimony cards.
But that's just it.
That's it for now. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, thanks to everybody who's joining us. Welcome. So Carolyn Holcomb, I guess we'll go first. Is she on? Yes, there you are, is here.
I'm here.
Welcome.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners, Director Brannum. My name is Caroline Holcomb. I'm the Executive Director at Central East Side Industrial Council, and it was in this capacity that I was invited to serve on the TIF Steering Committee and the Business Retention Subcommittee, where with other business leaders, we work to ensure the future of TIF investments aligned with the evolving needs of the district and the communities within it. Today, I am here to express the CEIC's support for the Central East Side Corridor TIF District's priorities, which represent a powerful opportunity for economic growth, stabilization, and equity within the Central City. I also want to recognize efforts undertaken by Prosper staff to collaborate, not only with our community, but also to engage the CEIC Board of Directors in listening sessions, as well as incorporating their feedback into the TIF plans that we saw today. The Central East Side has seen firsthand how public investments can drive maximum community impact through projects that we all know and love, like the East Bank Esplanade, the expansion of Streetcar into the inner southeast Portland, and most recently, the Bloomin Hour Bridge, which connects Lloyd and Central East Side, and an incredible opportunity to leverage business relationships and spur growth. We view this new TIF district as an opportunity to attract significant new investments, many of which are gaining momentum, and you've already heard about today. This includes the OMSI District, MLK Grant, Stark, and the Water Ave Corridors. The CEIC has valued the opportunity to sit on the committee and engage with Prosper staff and numerous community members throughout this process. Both the CEIC and our affiliate organization, Central East Side Together, which is the Enhanced Service District for the Central East Side, are eager to contribute and collaborate on an action plan with Prosper Portland to guide the first five years of investment and ensure that growth is inclusive and beneficial to all. We believe that the priority projects outlined in this new TIF district, economic and urban development, infrastructure, and affordable housing, will not only position the Central East Side as a dynamic industrial and employment hub, but also address the existing economic and social conditions to ensure that we can continue to respond to the district's long-term growth. Thanks for the opportunity to share more about our experience throughout this process, our support for the new TIF priorities and projects, as well as our desire to continue collaborating with you on these key investments.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, almost evening, Chair and Commissioners and Executive Director Brannum. I'm Jill Sherman. I'm a co-founder of Edlin &amp; Co. For those who aren't familiar with our firm, we're one of two successor, ooh, that's me really big, we're one of two successor companies to what was Gerting Edlin. And Edlin &amp; Co., we're women-owned, we're B Corp certified, and we are focused on mission-based real estate, which includes affordable housing, community facilities, projects that are pushing the boundaries of sustainability, and public-private partnerships. So both at Edlin &amp; Co., and then my prior work at Gerting Edlin, I've had the opportunity to work on a number of public-private partnerships with Prosper Portland, in addition to other public agencies around the state and in neighbors, neighboring states as well. So I am a firm believer in public-private partnerships. I really do believe that there are things private side can do that public side can't do, and vice versa, and we could actually do more and do better projects when we do partner together. So today, I'm here with my, my hat as the master development partner working with OMSI, but also primarily my role serving on the TIF Exploration Committee for the Central City and co-chairing the Large-Scale Projects Subcommittee of that, of that group. So I also want to express my appreciation for Prosper staff and a very thorough process that engaged a lot of different people and was very responsive as we asked for additional information and data analysis, et cetera, so that we could get to the point where everybody felt really good and supportive about what was being proposed in, you know, terms of shapes of districts and properties included, et cetera. So as Lisa noted in a presentation that started a while, a while ago, because there's a lot of content here, you know, most of the Central City TIF districts are expiring or sunsetting, you know, there's not a lot of resources left in those, so that really puts the city or the public sector in a position of not really having one of the key tools to be a partner and seeing the kind of, you know, equitable, sustainable economic growth and development that I think everybody wants to see. I also think it's not news to you that our Central City, on both the east and west sides of the river, could use some help and support, and that we do have a journey ahead of us to really get back to a place where I think our, is where we'd all like to see our Central City, and that work is going to require business and philanthropy and the non-for-profit sector and the public sector as well. And for you to really be able to participate as the public sector, you know, you need, you need those tools, and I think this is really going to provide you the opportunity to have that. Those tools are critical on a single project basis, but also critical when you're looking at a large, you know, multi-block redevelopment that really can only be unlocked with significant infrastructure investments, such as the OMSI redevelopment area. So in addition to what's being committed today, you know, we fully anticipate that at some point in the future, you know, we will be back having a discussion about future TIF resources to help do things like address parking, which would unlock additional development potential, or meet the affordable housing goals that we've jointly set out with the Housing Bureau and OMSI to accomplish. So in, in short, you know, I'm here to express my support, and then, of course, happy to answer any questions or continue to support the process as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, who would like to go next?
Chair Cruz?
Oh, yes.
We have a strip going into East Portland.
Okay.
You just go from Sabrina.
Back to the top. Okay, great, Sabrina then, Sabrina Wilson.
Hi, hello, my name is Sabrina Wilson, and I am the Executive Director of the Rosewood Initiative. We are a place-based nonprofit organization located in East Portland that has been implementing neighbor-led strategies since 2009. We believe everyone deserves a safe, amenity-rich neighborhood, giving them more self-determination over their own lives. As a community anchor, we foster community building and serve as a resource hub for East Portlanders most impacted by systemic exclusion. We strive to improve access to support systems that foster economic stability and upward mobility, health and wellness, and community resilience across East Portland neighborhoods. At Rosewood, we have been doing community economic development work at the neighborhood level since our inception, and we are proud to be one of the seven organizations in the Neighborhood Prosperity Network. The Rosewood team works tirelessly to stabilize our business community and enhance our district by offering small business grants, workforce navigation support, employer connections, resource navigation, and skill-building workshops. Each summer since the pandemic, we have hosted a Summer Makers Market featuring local entrepreneurs, many of whom are first-time vendors. We do the heavy lifting so they can focus on learning and growing. For our neighbors, we support these local entrepreneurs through Rosewood Bucks, which we can, are used as currency, and I invite you to check out our family-friendly Makers Market this Saturday. I am here today because I was appointed to the East Portland Tax Increment Finance Steering Committee in East Portland, and also served on the East 205 Working Group. The work we did in the East 205 Working Group was intentional and thoughtful, bringing together a wide array of perspectives to explore whether TIF could be a beneficial tool for our neighbors. Our group included leaders from our local neighborhood emergency team, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, and longtime residents. In addition to the deep work I did alongside my fellow working group members, the project team engaged in meaningful and thorough community engagement throughout this process. I want to extend my gratitude to Paula Byrd and the Prosper Portland staff, who not only provided valuable engagement and education to our working group, was also deep in community, engaging a wide range of communities, bringing broader perspectives, priorities, hopes, and desires for TIF as a tool for economic vitality in East Portland. Thank you for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to share my support.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll just keep going down the list. Josh Pangellian. Josh there? There you are.
Yeah, I'm on Zoom.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joshua Pangellian, and I am the owner of the Pep Gardens Cafe, business located just off of the 82nd Avenue Corridor, and I'm also a lifelong resident of the East Portland area. I really quick wanted to just express my gratitude to Roger, Dana, Kiana, Brian, and Catherine of the Prosper team, because we were a wily group, a lot of disagreements in the group, and they really helped manage it. Same with Camille Tremmer and Jessica Connor of the Portland Housing Bureau. So I applied to join the East, the 82nd Avenue Working Group because of three main reasons. I've witnessed three decades of an investment in this portion of our city. I own a business in 82nd Ave, and I live in the East Portland TIF District as well. And three, because it kept becoming this fear of the specter of urban renewal. And it, you know, that specter is pervasive amongst communities here, and that reason really troubled me over the last few months, but seeing the amazing amount of thoughts that went into the creation of this governance charter really gave me so much hope in these, the future of TIF funding as a remediation for the lack of investment in our communities. You know, after nine months of deliberating with my peers in the group, I'm still not 100% sure that that specter won't pop up from time to time, but I take great comfort in knowing that, that through advocates from Apano, ACO, Rose CDC, Hope &amp; Bread Church, and the Rosewood Initiative, that there are so many safeguards built in for the current residents, current business owners such as myself, and they've restricted fundings for projects that may pose threats to these marginalized communities, and even added in a preferential clause that ensures that funding will be prioritized to help repair the unintended consequences that could arise from the TIF projects in the district. As far as how this is going to affect me as a business owner and why I was really asked to speak here, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know. As a small cafe, I don't project out for five years. I project out for end of this year and then end of a couple of years from then. But knowing that there will be extra resources, that there will be resources for sticks and bricks and tenant improvements and just lifelines, really helps the small business community, especially post-COVID, as we are trying to continually figure out what is the new normal in this commercial environment. So just to end on that, I really am excited about the opportunities these new funds will be presenting to us, and I want to thank everybody again for the opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, next we have Corky Collier. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Corky Collier, Executive Director of the Columbia Corridor, member of the Sumner Park Rose Argate Columbia Corridor Working Group, which...
You'd think, oh, that, that helps, thank you. You'd think that'd be a long name, but I'm also serve on the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District, the UFSWPD.
That's impressive.
You didn't quite break the record, folks. You know, before I give my testimony, I want to do something that's probably not even really appropriate, but we just saw a tremendous amount of information. You've got multiple projects running in parallel on the same timeline and on schedule, not today's agenda on schedule, but the, the whole thing on schedule, and with a unified vision, and I just think staff deserves a hand for that. I would like to, you guys... And again, sorry if that wasn't politically correct, but, as I said, I'm with Columbia Corridor Association. In 1986, our association was created to provide public input into the new Airport Way URA. Thirty-eight years later, we're back with another request for another TIF district, this time not to convert fields to factories, but rather to enhance the blend of industrial and residential. There's a few along the way that would like the TIF district to be a mechanism to rezone as AC fit, or to decide what kind of manufacturing is best. Those decisions are far outside the purview of a TIF district, and appropriately so. There was very little question or disagreement about using TIF to build a more livable community. Our expectation is to build infrastructure that benefits employees as well as residents. For example, what if we could build district heating, where heat from the industrial area is used to benefit homes right across the street? Or Columbia SLU features, where employees can go out for lunch and families can come on the weekends? We'd like to make downtown Park Rose a more pleasant place for a work lunch or for evening shopping, and we want to draw in good companies that employ people that live nearby. We're already doing a pretty good job of that, actually. 39% of Columbia Corridor employees live within five miles of where they work. Think about it, a third of our industrial workforce lives in Viking distance. Columbia Corridor businesses matter because they employ more people of color and more people without a four-year college degree in a family-wage job than any other sector. The real value of this becomes clear when you imagine some of those jobs going away. If they go away, that employee will likely have to work in the retail or service sectors, making almost exactly half of their industrial wage. That's not good for our region, it's not good for our neighborhoods, it's just not good for people. Having a dense city and a mix of neighborhoods is a good thing, but conflict is inherently part of that mix. That's why it's been encouraging to hear conversations focused on symbiotic projects that make this part of town a better mix for employees as well as residents. This TIF district overlaps residential and industrial areas, with the intention of leveraging each for the benefit of all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, next up is Michael Lopez-Sarau from the Park Rose School District and Space. Okay? Okay?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, that's okay if you can't see me, I'm used to teaching without scene, I'm good with...
There you are.
All right.
There you are. We also have...
Hi. My name is Shree Lewis, I'm the Director of Business Services and Operations, and I'm speaking for Michael Lopez-Sarau, who had to leave because he has a child that he needs to do events for, and I, my child's in college. So we represent the school district within Park Rose. We have six schools, one high school, one middle school, and four elementary schools. As a superintendent, he got involved for looking at the, what the future impact is for our school district, and as you've seen in the other presentations from, I believe, Roger and the other two people, school districts actually don't get the benefit from, in dollar-wise, but we get the benefit in future things, as in the impacts to our students and family, and how they can benefit our community in the future. So I'd like to thank Roger and Tony, who actually helped me understand how the impact would be to our school district, because we're a unique school district unlike Portland, and I used to be their CFO. Our impact would be a lot higher because a lot of our revenue is from property taxes because we reside right by the airport. So we don't have a lot of homes, but we do have a lot of industrial. So it was very important for us to figure out what the fiscal impact would be for our school district, so I thank Roger and Tony for helping me do that and understand. Our school district is poverty district. We have about 80% of our students are poverty, we have 51 languages, and we have marginalized students, parents are working two to three jobs. So we were looking at the tax initiative to be able to see what we could help our students, and how it would affect our district, and with... and how it would affect our district and would the state make us whole with the state's school fund. When we talked to them, our future loss was anywhere about half a million dollars over a 30-year period. That's manageable in my world when I'm used to dealing with millions of dollars. I'll take a half a million dollars any day at any one given time. But we're looking to say we agree with this because it's going to give home for families. It could possibly give a community center for our kids. And as our kids said, hey, I like Kmart. I want a place for my kids to go look or go, hey, walk around in the store and see my friend, and what are they buying and what I not buying? We need things for that for our kids. They have to walk a long way to go to a grocery store, a long way to go to Target, things that are within their financial means. So I'm hoping to say that we appreciate everything. I know a couple of our meetings got a little contentious. And we and Mike will appreciate all the work that Prosper Portland has done, and we know the importance that this office does. So thank you for the opportunity for including Park Rose School District. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, next up, Margaret Salazar from Reach CDC. We'll discuss affordable housing. Hi.
Thank you for that as well. Thank you for the invitation to join you here today. For the record, my name is Margaret Salazar, and I'm CEO of Reach Community Development. We're an affordable housing nonprofit housing provider here in the Portland area. And for more than 40 years, Reach has been dedicated to building and preserving affordable housing across Portland communities. Today, I want to emphasize the critical importance of affordable housing production within the TIFF Districts, particularly in Portland Central City and in East Portland. TIFF funding has been a key resource for Reach and for many other affordable housing providers. Because of your investment and your leadership through these TIFF Districts, we've been able to open doors for hundreds of Portland families over the years. At Reach, we know firsthand that affordable homes are not just about four walls and a door. A safe, stable, and affordable home is essential for families' economic stability. And affordable housing is also critical to maintaining Portland as a vibrant and inclusive city. Too many Portland families and individuals are facing the harsh reality of housing instability and rents that they just can't afford. Without a strong commitment to affordable housing, many of these residents are at risk of being displaced from their communities, leading to further inequities. Tax increment finance can be a powerful tool for stimulating economic growth. Historically, as you are all aware, unchecked economic growth has also led to displacement of vulnerable families. That means that investments in affordable housing are absolutely critical to make sure that TIFF benefits the people who need those resources the most. Reach strongly supports Portland's continued commitment to affordable housing development, particularly in the Central City and East Portland Districts. TIFF is a primary source of funding for new affordable housing development in the city. It is the missing puzzle piece that we need to make sure that these developments can go forward. Tonight, nearly 3,000 individuals and families will go to bed in affordable housing provided by Reach. Some of these homes are within the boundaries of the proposed TIFF Districts. TIFF financing will help us work together with all of you, not just to expand new housing opportunities, but to receive the funding to preserve and improve dozens of homes in these districts that desperately need capital repairs and reinvestment. The 45% affordable housing set aside in TIFF Districts is an important investment in Portland's future. In the Central City, this funding will enable the development of mixed-income housing that ensures all residents, regardless of income, can continue to live in and contribute to the city. In East Portland, an allocation of at least 45% for housing is even more critical. This area has long been underserved and is now facing significant pressures from rising housing costs. Allocating TIFF funds to affordable housing in East Portland will help us to stabilize and repair existing homes and to protect existing Reach residents from displacement. I want to reiterate, Reach has strong support for the creation of new TIFF Districts. Together, we can invest these funds to create economic growth in an inclusive way so that Portland will remain affordable and to increase the affordability of our diverse communities. And so that we can create a city where everyone can find a safe and affordable place to call home. We urge the board to work closely with organizations like Reach to turn these goals into reality. Thank you so much for your time and your leadership in extending resources to affordable housing that our city so desperately needs. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for those comments. Okay, next up, we have Monique Claiborne of GPI Westside. Is she on Zoom?
Yes.
Monique, hi.
Hello, good evening. Hello, Chair Cruz and Prosper Portland Board. My name's Monique Claiborne, and I'm the President/CEO of Greater Portlanding, also known as GPI. We are charged with promoting the Portland region to attract high-quality businesses and competitive wages in coordination with our public and private partners. I'm here today in support of the creation of six new TIFF Districts in Portland. GPI and Prosper Portland have been partners for many years, and I work closely with Prosper Portland's Business Advancement Team on business recruitment projects. The creation of new TIFF Districts in Portland furthers GPI's mission in touting the competitiveness of the region. Portland Central City is the hub of the region's economy. Targeted and strategic investments in TIFF Districts to revive, sorry. Targeted and strategic investments in TIFF Districts will revitalize key areas of the city, attract large employers, support small businesses, and foster a vibrant, inclusive neighborhood that will significantly have a positive impact on the Portland's economy and the broader region. TIFF Districts on the east side of Portland, including 82nd Avenue, East 205, and Sumner Park Rose Argay Columbia Corridor, will also provide key resources for stabilizing residents and small businesses in these areas. TIFF is a tool that can catalyze investment and further position Portland as a key market for growing companies. I was honored to co-chair the Central City TIFF Exploration Steering Committee, and I'm grateful for the steering committee's members who dedicated many hours to providing input and feedback on the proposal you saw today. It was no small feat. I believe the creation of these new TIFF Districts will support Portland's inclusive economic growth, and thank you for having me here today to support these new TIFF Districts.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Peter Andrews. He's with PMC Central City Committee for the West Side TIFF District. Peter, hi. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the time, and I apologize I'm not there in person. My name is Peter Andrews. I'm the COO of Melvimer Companies. Since 1945, we've owned, operated, and invested in meaningful commercial real estate projects from Wilsonville to Vancouver. Our integrated model offers an umbrella of commercial real estate services that aims to create shared success for our clients and our community. I also am Chair of our Central City Coalition Committee for the Portland Metro Chamber, and I'm part of the development team in partnership with related companies, which is currently under an ENA for the Broadway Corridor. I'm here to enthusiastically encourage you to approve the Downtown TIFF, and I want to strongly thank all of the members that were a part of that group and committee that voted unanimously to approve it. Prosper Team, Eco Northwest, did a fantastic job of answering really detailed questions and bringing through a process that really incorporated a large amount of different views and perspectives. I'm going to echo what others have said, specifically the importance and value of this tool. This truly is city-making and incredibly important for the recovery of our downtown that has gone through an incredible change in a very short period of time. You all know the statistics, so I won't echo them. But the ability to imagine a future, which I really hope we can, and think of what the vision of our great city could be, both placemaking, so I dream of a community that is inclusive and brings back families to a downtown, specifically riverfront, with permanent installations, improvements, and infrastructure that we currently can't do, but this type of funds would allow. Increasing housing across the spectrum, in particular affordable workforce and market rate housing, in an area that really truly lacks housing will be incredibly important to the resurrection of this area. And finally, the infrastructure and economic development tools that our city just does not have without this specifically. It will be very important, as Jill said, both for OMSI but also for Broadway Corridor, to have this tool in being able to deliver the infrastructure necessary to unlock the incredible development opportunity that we have at Broadway Corridor. So finally, I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the group, and appreciate the opportunity to be here today to enthusiastically encourage you to approve this.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate those comments. Okay, next, we have a couple of, a few additional folks. Ken Thrasher with Northwest Community Conservancy. Mr. Thrasher, welcome. Yes. Oh, sure, we can do that. So Ken Thrasher, Nick Sovey with Rose CDC and the East Portland Action Plan. And then we have Alando Simpson with the SPACE entity. Sure, please do. Yeah, I have to push on the.
All right, it's better. Now it's greener. It was green, but it's greener now. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Kenneth Thrasher, and my address is 1001 Northwest Lovejoy, Unit 1301, Portland, Oregon 97209. And I am the Board Chair of the Northwest Community Conservancy in the Pearl District. And I want to also thank, while I'm here, thank you for allowing me to give some testimony, but also thank the staff that came out, Kimberly, Brian, Shay, and Sarah, that have talked with us about the process. And what I'm here today is talk about, I think, an area of the process that got left out. And Al Ho Solheim, who was one of the founders of the Pearl, wanted to be here today, but his schedule wouldn't allow it. And he asked me to send his thoughts with myself and support what I'm about to talk to you about, about the Pearl District. And as we looked at the process and what happened, what our concern was is that a big portion of the Pearl District was left out of the West Side TIFF proposed plan. And that, what was only included was the North Park blocks, the post office site, Powell's Books, and the building just to the east of it, which is Doc Marten Store. It left out all the rest of the Pearl. And many parts of the Pearl are older buildings. If you kind of looked at the area we proposed, including, which was West Burnside to Marshall and Northwest 9th to 15th. And if you took out some of the higher-value buildings, you would find about 60% of these are older buildings and areas that need also future investments like the other TIFF monies will be used for in our city. So when we looked at that, we looked at kind of the process where there was no real Pearl District representation on the committee that did the work. We're really concerned about being excluded versus included. And we know nothing is ever intentional. We're trying to do the right thing for the city, and we believe in the TIFF process. But by leaving this large area out, which is one, has been one of the economic gemstones for Portland, we're really concerned that over time, a lack of continued investment is not the best thing for Portland because this is a dry area for people to coming into the city and tourism. And we do believe the data that Echo Northwest produced was flawed in a number of areas because it used a lot of old historical data. And by putting us in the green zone, it didn't take into the fact that we have 115 closed, street-level, commercial properties today in the Pearl in 130 blocks, which is a pretty dense problem when you kind of look at it today. And many of our smaller businesses are down 10% to 30% since 2019. Property values have dropped, and we're losing a lot of businesses moving out into other areas because they can't survive high taxes with no services. So we've had to put in place the Northwest Community Conservancy, which is a nonprofit, to deal with the homeless situation and to deal with safety at night because we have a lot of break-ins and a lot of vandalism. And in fact, in the time we've done this in the last 18 months, we have actually had 1,600 people we've moved into shelters in just the Pearl District along the I-405. It's pretty incredible when you think about the work we've accomplished. And we've done a lot of other things to improve the district. And so we, kind of, the reward we kind of feel like we're getting is that we're not included in the TIFF District. We were left out of the original city business tax credit, which we did get improved by being on the Governor's Task Force Committees. We got that approved in February to be put back in. But I think it's really important that, to really value these districts that provide economic value. And the fact that we're going to be building on the post office side Broadway Corridor probably 250 new low-income affordable housing units, we're going to need jobs here and support for those jobs because we already have a large population of affordable housing that we're supporting. So I think my final comment is just, I would really like you to reconsider that because I think the overall value would be very minimal to add these portions in, which only represents about 36 blocks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Nick Sovey, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nick Sovey. I'm the Co-Director of Rose Community Development. Rose is a community-based nonprofit that has been working to revitalize outer southeast Portland since 1992 through affordable housing and other kinds of community development. I'm also the Co-Chair of the East Portland Action Plan Housing Committee and was also a member of Prosper's East Portland and 82nd Avenue TIFF Advisory Committees. And thanks for the opportunity to speak today. Thanks to staff and the Commission for your work on this. I support the TIFF Districts, but I'd hope you consider policies that can make this tool more effective in building wealth among marginalized communities and preventing displacement. EPAP and some affordable homeownership groups support increasing the affordable housing set aside to 55% and adding a 20% set aside for homeownership. And also to meet the set aside within each district and not as an aggregate across the district. Before the set aside, affordable housing was always the first thing that got cut from the budget because low-income and housing insecure people don't have political power. This contributes to the massive affordable housing and homelessness crisis in Portland and across the country. EPAP supports adding an affordable homeownership set aside because the city has failed to provide consistent resources for homeownership. And I mentioned that homeownership support is needed for people up to 120% of median income, just because of where the housing market is today. The Lentz Home Ownership Initiative is an example of what can be accomplished by homeownership programs. Rose organized LHI by bringing together everyone with a shared interest in creating new home buyers in Lentz, nonprofit housing providers, public agencies, including PDC at that time, neighborhood groups, lenders, and realtors. Eventually, more than 50 organizations became LHI partners. And from 2005 to 2009, we created 320 new home buyers in Lentz. At its height, one in every four home buyers in the neighborhood was created by an LHI partner. And those 320 homeowners gained more than $70 million of equity gain between 2010 and 2020. So that's more than $2,000 per household. So you can see the significant impact that has and why we should renew those kinds of efforts. And yeah, just, we know that property ownership is one of the best ways to prevent displacement. So yeah, I hope you would consider this opportunity to create more generational wealth for folks and build stronger neighborhoods through forward-thinking policies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have Alando Simpson. And you're here today on behalf of the SPACE, what they call SPACE.
SPACE, SPAC, SPACE BACK.
We've been told not to say SPAC. Welcome, Alando. Good to see you.
The town of acronyms. Appreciate it. Chair Cruz, members of the Commission, for the record, Alando Simpson, CEO of CORE, otherwise known as City of Rose Disposal Recycling, local solid waste recycling and innovation company, really focusing on and doubling down all of our efforts to bring the circular economy to Portland's metropolitan region as an advancement economic development tool to minimize our dependence on waste and find more creative alternatives to create 21st century. to create 21st century manufacturing off of renewable products in waste streams. And so, on behalf of Space, I'm here today to share my support and excitement for the new proposed TIF district. And as simple as I can put it, staff's overall due diligence, community outreach and engagement that has gone into this process. You know, the history of TIF has caused generations of harm and, you know, those harms cannot be repaired. The city has acknowledged this and in doing so, has made many attempts, gestures and efforts to address the systemic racist practices, regulations and policies that have substantially harmed many underserved communities of color, not to mention hindered growth and opportunity. First and foremost, my entire civic career has been dedicated to fighting for what's right and being a voice for not only those that come from my community and those that look like me, but my employees and the workforces for all businesses of color in the city, region and state. I have sat back and watched people in the city of Portland sacrifice themselves to do what's right, to do what's equitable and advantageous for our future generations by trying to stay in alignment with all of the documented plans, such as the Portland Plan, the Economic Development Strategy, the Neighborhood Economic Development Strategy, Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative, Climate Action Plan, and most recently, Advanced Portland. And of course, the list goes on and on and on. And all of the content within these documents are now beginning to play themselves out years later. And it's happening at Prosper Portland. So today's TIF topic is such an important milestone, not only in Portland's history, but more importantly, in Portland's future. And if I may for a second, if you guys give me a little bit of time here because sometimes you know me enough that I'm not scripted, but I'm trying to stay within script here. But I just want to take a second to acknowledge an important asset in our city who has been vital, instrumental and key to our collective aspirations to create a world-class, sustainable economy. And with that, I would be remiss if I did not go on record today to say that important asset goes by the name of Kimberly Branum. And she has either been a part of, involved in, and even led this prosperous transformation of the city of Portland, which I'm grateful for. And even humbled by what she has even been able to accomplish in her leadership capacity these past eight years. Additionally, I'm very happy for her next chapter. It's kind of a bittersweet thing. But her continued fight, advocacy, hard work, resiliency, tenacity, and most importantly, her grace. I am humbled and excited that she'll be carrying that forward over at the port. So even though she's going to be embarking on a new opportunity, I'm sure she'll still be close by and checking in on all of us here and there. However, what gives me greater comfort is she has built an amazing team. And this team possesses amazing spirits, desires and ethos to carry on the same energy she is leaving behind into the future of this agency. And I'm saying all of that because, you know, leadership is very complicated. And these are some very complicated times I think we've gone through over the past several years. And seeing what this organization has had to overcome, given its history, given its dark side, and really be able to, to be able to break through that and get to a place of light and enlightenment is really exciting and something that I can stand behind and support going forward. And so in closing, I want you all to know that on the board level and the commission level that you have amazing assets in this agency, as I've seen many come and go. And I'm even confident that these new TIF districts will become a significant case study one day as to how you conceptualize, plan, design and develop a world-class 21st century city through sustainable economic development practices, regulations and policies. And so I highly encourage you all to continue to work, stay the course, stay steadfast in making Portland an inclusive, sustainable and prosperous economy for all future generations to come. And I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Great comments and we appreciate the, all the good words.
Could I request a restroom break? I don't know who else needs it, but.
Yes, so actually, why don't we take, we could take a little break before we do our votes, if you want. What do you think? You guys okay with that? Everybody okay with that? Oh, it is? Okay. Well, yeah. Yeah, let's, we'll just take, we'll take a very short break, maybe like a three-minute break. How about that?
Thank you.
Sound good? And then we will go ahead and do through our votes. And we have about 19 sets of votes to do. Then we will have a very brief break, another five-minute break. We'll just run over, this is all going to be informal, grab pizza, bring it back, and then we'll continue on. So that's the plan. Okay, so, thank you for coming back. Appreciate it. Those are amazing presentations. Incredible amount of information. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Some questions.
Questions. Who would like to go first?
I just have some questions that I think I maybe should have asked in my briefing, but I feel like also, they also, I just want to be super clear, don't have to be answered now. They're sort of potentially future questions. But one of my questions was on the preservation component and the homeownership component that is in the central east side TIF plan. Is that part of the 45% set aside or would that be on its part that is included in the 45%?
Yes, correct. Each district has its own 45% designation.
Great. And so the, so homeownership, the homeownership portion and the repair, home repair, and that is included in the 45%? Or is it just construction of new affordable housing?
Yeah, I want to be, in the central east side, usually, like in general, in the central city, PHB's homeownership programs look very different. They look more like condo homeownership versus single-family residential. So I, I do think that's an important one. That's, I, so that's what I would say. And usually it's new multifamily rental that they're doing in a central city context just because of the zoning, rather than usually when PHB talks about their homeownership programs, their single-family residential programs.
In the, in the east, east side.
Oh, in the east side ones? Yeah, then, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, largely, yes. The, the big portion of the 45% set aside is allocated to those programs specifically for folks who are under 80% AMI, so, in east Portland.
I'm just going to, can I just repeat it? And then I feel like just so I, I'm absolutely clear. So when you say 45% of set aside for affordable housing, that includes one, new construction of new affordable housing. Two, maintaining current housing that's in the affordability space. Three, support for homeownership with people who are under a certain MFI.
Correct.
And that is all included in that 45% set aside?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. And I know that's true in all of the districts. And then I think my other connection, my other question was the overlay in the, in the space. I think that's what we're calling it, the space. On the overlay with the space plans, the sectoral plans that Prosper currently has to grow in, in certain sectors in manufacturing, is that, were they part of the conversation in the space TIF district? You have a certain name for them and I don't know what the name is.
Like manufact, okay, so, yes, so our business advancement team, metals and machinery works real, metals manufacturing works really closely with Corky and the Columbia Corridor Association. And so the way that the work, work groups were each put together, there was a project lead and then an executive sponsor. So Shay was executive sponsor for that one because he, because of the engagement around our target industry clusters, so. Yeah, that was, I don't know, Roger, if that's, if you would add anything. But that was really the thinking behind it is because it's a unique mix of jobs.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. And then my other question is about the central city ones, the three in the central city area. And what, how involved and engaged was Travel Portland or Travel Oregon in those, given that one of the priorities out of those was like drawing people to those spaces?
Yeah, I can, we invite, I think we ended up, if I recall correctly, we had board members from Travel Portland who were on the committee. The Portland Art Museum was on the committee. So we certainly had an intentional kind of voice on behalf of venues and kind of visitorship in Port, in the central city.
That's great. I really appreciate this. I feel like, I, I just want to, this like, my comments on the whole process and thing is just the incredible work that you all have done over this period of time is just so meaningful. And as a person who was displaced from northeast Portland to Lentz because I couldn't, my family could no longer afford that. And now I live in an open renewal district. And I think I can echo some of the fears when a community like mine hears the term open renewal. That means that I don't get to live there anymore. And so I really just appreciate the like pathways that you guys have all gone through to engage the community and really think about how keeping people in the place and how people are involved in these, in this. And people, redevelopment being about people and not just beautiful things. And I think that that's a really hard balance. And I, I looked at all of those TIF plans and I was briefed and just like the phenomenal work that each of you did. I could see the community's voice in each one of them and what they wanted and how much you've listened to them. And so I just really look forward as we move forward in this. I know it's, it's not what everybody wants. And I heard, you know, we have some folks who are like, you rarely have communities coming forward and being like, hey, we were not included and we really want to be included and please can we, right, in a government process? And so I just want to appreciate that that also speaks to your incredibly and great work. And I'm so excited to vote for all of these TIF districts. And I just am looking forward to the next 30 years. And this is the, you know, the tree that we'll plant, that our grandchildren will rest under. So thank you so much.
Very well put. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I want to start by reiterating what Commissioner Higgins and also what Alando Simpson said about Kimberly and the entire team's work. One of the reasons why I joined this board was because of the upcoming TIF districts and how incredibly impactful they were going to be for Portland and will be for Portland. And I know it's been a heavy lift and it's been a sprint. And so I can't even imagine honestly what the last year has been like for the entire team. And it's really, really impressive where Prosper is today, especially, you know, given the history and the lessons learned from all of that and where we've been able to bring the agency with Kimberly's leadership and all of your work. So, so much congratulations to be here. I know there's still work to do, but I want to recognize that. And with the end of the year coming, and it's funny to think that we have another, was it 30 to 34 years after that to think about? So thinking ahead a little bit, I was hoping to find out what the process is for the Action Plan Committee to be put together. Because in my eyes, at least for the next several years, the people who have a voice on that committee are going to have a huge role in how this plan gets kicked off and rolled out. And I understand the funds will be limited, but that's going to set the foundation and the precedent for probably the next 30 to 34 years. I know that I would love to be involved as much as I can. I'm sure there's going to be a process, but I'd love for the board to be involved and for as many voices to be heard in that selection process, even though I know the seats are limited, so we can't include everybody on it. And so I wanted to emphasize that and just put in, please include me. Send me names, ask me my opinion. You don't have to listen to me, but I will give it to you heartily. And I also wanted to touch on an email that we received. I know it was sent to us and wanted to just confirm, I think it was addressed in the presentation. The Williams and Russell Project had reached out about concern around their funding and the amendments to the existing TIF districts. I saw on one of the slides that there was a plan to retain $70 million in the north northeast district. And is that inclusive of the Williams and Russell commitment by Prosper?
Yeah, maybe. All of the commitments that we have in north northeast stay whole, so the answer is yes. And in fact, we just came from a meeting earlier today with the Williams and Russell team and with Legacy. And what you will see come before the board in September is actually kind of, is what we've been talking with them about for about, for a $10 million investment. We were working through how that gets used between the black business hub, the land transfer, making sure that the site's ready for development. So that will come before the board in September. And absolutely, we stay whole in our commitment to Williams and Russell. And that will be further memorialized, not only in the budget, which it sits in today, but also via an actual agreement that you would be approving. That was all I had.
Great. Good, okay. Well, my extremely talented fellow board members have stolen much of my thunder, but I would just say that I just also really appreciate all the hard work that went into all of this. And, you know, I especially appreciated the presentations that kind of drew out some more of the color and background behind the different districts and what people were looking for. I thought that was really helpful for the board and we don't often hear about that. Sometimes we get down into the minutia and we don't really hear like what the people are really doing and wanting. So that was terrific. And then just also wanted to observe that, you know, over the years, I've seen a number of these, of TIF districts and related efforts come along. And there's been an evolution, you know, since the NPIs were adopted and then since Cully was adopted and now these TIF districts. There's been a steady evolution to some, a governance model that's much more responsive, I think, much more focused on the issues that we have to address and just far better. So I just want to applaud everybody for having thought through that and, and built those relationships. So thanks very much. Really appreciate all of it. Is there anything else anybody would like to say? Okay, well then, thanks to everyone. We will go ahead and vote then. So I apologize for this. But I guess we have to do all of these separately. And we have 19 separate resolutions. So we have to have a motion, a second, discussion and vote on each one. So what I'm, what I'm thinking is, if we, if we, if nobody, if nobody is inclined to have a discussion about any particular resolution, we will just go, go through them each quickly. I'll, I will just call for a motion on the number. Somebody can make the motion second, we'll just vote, we'll go to the second one or the next one. Does that sound okay? We'll just do it as well as we can and then, and we have pizza as incentive. So, 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 motion for 7553.
I so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion 7554.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7555.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7556.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion for 7557.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion for 7558.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7559.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7560.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7561.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7562.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7563.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
Sorry, everyone. Let the record show, I mess that up. Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Set, motion for 7564.
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion for 7565.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7566.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion for 7567.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7568.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7569.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for 7570.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And drumroll, please. Motion, motion for 7571.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That concludes. All right. So now we will have a five-minute recess. Thanks. Gives us while we eat our dinner at the same time. So, thanks for your patience. Item 15 is an action item, adopting Budget Amendment Number One for the fiscal year beginning January one, excuse me, July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, and making appropriations. And Tony Barnes will present. Welcome back, Tony.
Good evening, Chair Cruz and Commissioners and Executive Director Brannon. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO of Prosper Portland, he/him pronouns. So this action before you today is Resolution 7572. It's the first budget revision for this fiscal year. We're doing this a little bit earlier than usual because there's some key items that we want to make sure is moved forward and appropriated in the budget to help transactions move forward. So I'll summarize a number of items that's included here. There's really three main areas. And next slide, please. That's included in the budget revision. One, it's appropriating prior year action plan and TIF district resources to the current fiscal year. So it's mainly a technical adjustment that addresses dollars that were included in last year's budget and being moved forward into this fiscal year's budget, mainly in the TIF districts. It also updates budgets to align to the adopted contract amounts that have been approved by the City of Portland for certain economic development contracts that we did not know when the budget was adopted in June. And then finally, the other main item is budgeting the Business Organe grants for Broadway Corridor and the OMSI transportation improvements. So a little background here, the requested action and purpose is around ORS 294, the governing body to approve appropriations. So expenditures can be made. The appropriation categories of Prosper Portland are Administration, Economic Development, Infrastructure, Housing, Property Redevelopment. So Exhibit A to the resolution includes a fund-by-fund summary of these appropriations and all the changes that are being made and requested from the adopted budget that was presented in June. The practice is that all revenue and expenditure changes are incorporated into the budget revisions and to comprehensively update the budget and total resources throughout the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So, looking at our schedule, we had the budget adopted in June. We are actually in August still, not September, but we're doing the revised one budget where we're adjusting a number of things, including the Strategic Investment Fund and other funds. We'll bring forth in December the second budget revision once we finalize the audit for last fiscal year. It includes a number of mid-year adjustments that we'll be presenting. It also includes any adjustments made by the City of Portland as part of their fall budget adjustments that affect Prosper's general fund and Canada's fund resources. So more coming on that later in the year. But as we get into January through March, we'll continue to monitor the budget and present other changes to you if necessary. And these items will also flow into budget development for the 2526 budget year. So it'll be a continuous process. Next slide, please. So some numbers at a high level, when we roll all the funds together that are included in Exhibit A, resources, the changes to resources are shown here. The big gating fund balance based on last year's under expenditures, about $123 million. These are largely action plan committed resources, like Old Town Action Plan resources, Lent, Gateway for projects that were underway but haven't spent. There's about $223,800 and $800,000 in fees, charges, and grants that are related to City of Portland contracts, like the remaining American Rescue Plan funds that need to be spent by December 31st. So we're truing those up based on the final amounts. The $12 million is directly related to the Business Organe grants for OMSI and Broadway Corridor infrastructure improvements. And finally, we're not finally, but TIF DEP proceeds, $5 million represents the final bond proceeds we need to draw down in Downtown Waterfront before we terminate the district. That'll be mostly allocated towards the Falcon Building project. And finally, transfers in of $18 million. That represents a kind of a technical change where we're consolidating mainly the Old Town Action Plan resources in one fund. Previously, they were in two different funds, Downtown Waterfront and River District. And as we close things out, we're consolidating the remaining program income resources into one fund, so we can just manage that better. So it's kind of an internal transfer. It doesn't really impact any major changes outside of those funds. Next slide, please. In total, for Exhibit A, all the expenditures increase about $108 million. I don't anticipate all of these expenditures will be made this fiscal year, but we're recognizing the appropriations, so those commitments can be made. And expenditures can be made also if necessary this fiscal year. Whatever's not spent, we'll roll forward in the spring to the future fiscal year as necessary. It doesn't include, at this point, changes for the housing set aside. That'll be part of the second budget revision. We're still finalizing things with the Portland Housing Bureau on the final resources from last year that need to be updated. But that'll be for you in November, December. Next slide, please. So just touching upon some of the main changes in the budget revision that's recommended in the economic development category, there's about $1 million. It's for carryover, the Strategic Retention and Expansion Program that was authorized last year. Those funds are anticipated to go out this year. And there's also some prior year earnings for last year's ice rink that we're re-appropriating this year to help support this year's planned ice rink for fiscal year 2425. It also includes the Community Opportunities and the Handments Program with the City of Portland. That's one of the numbers that we're increasing to true up to a current year contract of $2.6 million. And the American Rescue Plan Act, the final dollars, the total amount left to spend is 2.8. So we're, we're truing that contract up too to recognize those dollars. Finally, in economic development, Strategic Investment Fund, small business lending, there's about $5 million left over from last year. That's mainly from committed loans, loans that were committed, just haven't spent. The dollars haven't gone out the door. So that's being re-appropriated this year as those loans disperse this year to, to the borrowers. Next slide, please. There's also dollars in the TIF districts for related business lending funds for Northeast Action Plan, Old Town, Central East Side, and Gateway. In the infrastructure category, the dollars are mainly related to the OMSI and Broadway Corridor dollars, the $12 million grants. But there's also a $3 million increase to carryover funding to make whole the planned investment from Central East Side to the OMSI infrastructure grant. So that's about making the funding a total of $10.9 million. And there's also dollars for the Fourth Avenue Project to finish that in North McAdam. Next slide, please. And the final category here, property redevelopment, again, the Strategic Investment Fund, about $17 million in carryover for committed loans and remaining uncommitted funds from last fiscal year. The total funding available left in the Strategic Investment Fund is about $42 million. So you'll see that carried in the budget this year and maybe going into the next fiscal year and the year after as well. The Old Town Action Plan, there's about $34 million left in the carryover for lending and grant and activities. There's about $4.3 million of that for the Falcon Building that's allocated. And then North Northeast Action Plan, about $7.6 million for lending and grant activity related to the Action Plan and other district priorities. Next slide, please. Last districts touching upon here, Gateway Action Plan, about $850,000 from last year for project development and grant resources, mainly Prosperity Investment Program resources. And then $12 million in remaining resources in Lent. That's carried over for grants, loans in the 92nd and Herald Development Project. And then Central East Side's the remaining resources there for $3.7 million for investments in that district as it closes out. Next slide, please. And that's it, I think. So that sums up all the carryover requests, the bring over funding from last year that was available into the action plan and budgets for this year and going forward, and truing up those contracts with the City of Portland and getting those in place. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Those, nice to have them all laid out like that. Anybody have any questions, comments? No? Okay. Great. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. All right. Would somebody like to make another motion?
Since I'm not eating my food.
I second.
Great. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, Resolution Number 7572.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, we have item 16. This is an action item, authorizing the Executive Director to execute the collective bargaining agreement between Prosper Portland and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 75, Local 3769. And Hope Whitney and Faith Aiken will present.
Thank you.
Welcome, Hope and Faith.
Turn on the mic. Okay, we've got a PowerPoint for you. But I'm Hope Whitney, General Counsel, as you know, and...
I'm Faith Aiken. I'm the Equity Outcomes Analyst and our AFSMI 3769 Union President.
And we are here today, the action before you. Next slide, Justin, is to authorize Kimberly to sign the next successor collective bargaining agreement between Prosper Portland and AFSMI. Next slide, please. So on the management team, I want to recognize the incredible support that I received from my colleagues, Sorilda and Anna from Workplace Change, provided invaluable support to the team, Karan Folsom, our CAO, and Robert Smith. You know, this, this was an interesting process, and I could not have done it without them.
On the labor side, so myself at our bargaining table, I work in the Equity Policy and Communications Department. Catherine Hardinger, who you've heard from today, was our former Vice President, and she works in development and investment. Kevin Flag is our Secretary. He also works in development and investment. Sue Ball, who's here this evening, works in economic development. And Deborah Kidney was our lead negotiator from AFSMI, who's also here today.
Great. Excellent. So just a bit of history and context. As you can see from the timeline, it's been five years since we've negotiated the full contract at Prosper Portland. The existing contract initially took effect back in 2019, before the pandemic and all of the changes that the pandemic ushered into our work and the workforce. We extended the, the collective bargaining agreement twice through two letter of agreement extensions. And it finally expired this past June 30th. In advance of the expiration date, the union, back in December of last year, notified us of their decision to bargain the whole new contract, not to do another extension through the traditional bargaining process. And I would just say on this that I would love the opportunity for Prosper Portland to sort of build the trust and rapport with the union, that we would be able to return to the, to an interest-based bargaining process, perhaps next time around when this expires in 2027, maybe starting at the Labor Management Committee, as you'll talk about later. You know, unlike the interest-based bargaining approach, the traditional bargaining approach that we used, you know, it's more positional, it involves, you know, one party puts its draft proposal on the table and the other party responds, and there's kind of winners and losers as to how it's worded. You know, and that can be tough. But we worked through it, and I believe we've crafted a contract that has the support of management and the union. And we're just mindful of the need to intentionally repair any of the relationships that were challenged during this process. I don't know if you have anything ahead. Okay, next slide.
Thanks. I wanted to take a minute to talk about the priorities of the workforce. So we had the opportunity, there are 68 union members at Prosper Portland, you've heard from many of them this evening, you hear from them all the time, who work in project management, construction management, and our administrative services, our equity policy and communications. And we had an opportunity back in December to survey our members and find out what their priorities were, both compensation and non-compensation related priorities related to working here at Prosper Portland. What we came up with were three really clear labor priorities. And those were, the first one, creating clear paths of growth for employees interested in growing their careers here at Prosper Portland. 65% of our workforce have started in the last two years. And as we've mentioned before, this is the first time that we've had a majority of folks who work here that are folks of color. So there's a unique opportunity to really consider, how do we retain a highly skilled and talented workforce and create a way for them to have clear opportunities for growth and career ladders here at Prosper Portland? The second priority was maintaining flexibility to allow for work-life balance while managing highly intense and high workloads. We pivoted quickly during the pandemic. Some of you remember, it was a really intense time, and we've moved into a hybrid work environment. I think many of us are navigating what a new normal is, and what does it look like to have time together in community while also prioritizing flexibility for people to be able to balance work and life. And then finally, competitive salaries that incentivize retention and account for a high level of tech, technical expertise and lived experience. We have a unique problem where 70% of our staff are compressed at the top step of pay. So how do we consider financial incentives for a highly compressed workforce without areas for increased compensation? So I want to note that while these are not all of our priorities, these were the highest priorities underpinned by the union, and they underpinned all of the proposals that we brought to the bargaining table. As Hope mentioned, the union voted to ratify the contract on August 5th. The vote of the union was 46 for and 16 against. Some of the issues that were, in understanding the 16 who voted to not ratify the union, were some of the areas we'll discuss a little bit as we talk about what was finalized. But one of the big issues was around pay. And so we can talk a little bit more about that as we talk about where we've landed on the CBA.
Okay, so now we'll just go through, there's more detail provided in your board report if you want to look at that, but we'll just go hit the highlights of what's changed in this new agreement versus the last one that was in effect. So as I mentioned, it's a three-year contract that is effective through June 30th, 2027. On the return to office discussion, where we landed is that, starting actually next Tuesday, if this action is approved today, the two required days in the office would be Tuesdays and Wednesdays for everyone, creating intentionally that community on those days. And then, starting in February, an additional eight hours per pay period would be required. You know, folks will be allowed to work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday potentially one week, and then Tuesday, Wednesday the next, back and forth, some flexibility there. We also landed on a 2.5% COLA for everyone each year. And then, as people move up steps, they get a 3.5% step increase. But as Faith mentioned, 70% of the represented workforce won't get that step increase because they're already at the top. And for those, they will get a one-time bonus of 2% in 2024. We've also added the Juneteenth holiday as part of the holiday schedule, and sort of continuing what we were doing in the LOA to kind of recognize the continuing what we were doing in the LOA to kind of recognize the enormous lift that staff provides us, and you saw it here today with these TIF districts. There will be an office closure the first year of the contract between the federal Christmas and New Years. And then, in the latter years of the contract, there will be these three sort of floating personal holidays that folks can use during that time, but the office won't be closed.
The final three things I want to mention are the inclusion of translation pay. So we have several colleagues who translate our surveys or translate materials. And so during a pay period, if they translate materials, they would have a 1% salary increase for that pay period that they were working on translations. We redefined and sort of reinvigorated our Labor Management Committee. As Hope mentioned, the desire for management was to do an interest-based bargaining approach that's highly technical, which we could get into talking about, all the different labor management approaches at the table. But I think one of the things that's really clear is a desire from the union and from management to repair the relationship and to repair trust. And we imagine that that can be done in a Labor Management Committee, which is for union members and for leadership positions that work on issues related to the labor workforce. We expanded the education fund to now include development, so this is something I'm excited about. It includes potential coaching pay, so if you have a career coaching issue, you could use the education fund resume development or interview prep. And we increased the amount of the education fund from a total of 20,000 to 35,000. Next slide.
The other thing that we did was, we took that 2019 contract, and we made it legible and more signposting, and it's just a great document now, Chair Cruz. We also, you know, updated language, you know, to update pronouns and just make it more accessible, so kind of excited about that. We modernized the inclement weather policy, because now that we do have this virtual office, we can, you know, leverage that when there is a weather event. We also, you know, like the rest of the state, we implemented the Equal Pay Act. There's now been some learning in the few years that that's been effect, and some best practices, some legal interpretations. So it's now time to sort of revisit how Prosper Portland implemented that. Faith mentioned the compression issue at the top of the pay scale, and we've committed in the contract to do that in consultation with the union. We also renamed our sick leave to health and safety leave, recognizing that there are more reasons that an employee can now use this leave. And also change that section to implement Oregon's new Paid Leave Oregon law. Also, we continued the parking subsidy in this building from the prior letters of agreement. And, you know, prior to, a bit concurrent to negotiations, we completed a class comp study, and as part of that, we reclassified seven positions in alignment with that study. So I believe that is everything.
We have invited testimony.
Yes.
Great. We have Deborah Kidney.
Yes, that is me.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am Deborah Kidney. Thank you all for being here. So I'm the AFSMI representative who bargained this contract, along with my incredible team of Prosper union leaders, Faith and Catherine, who you've seen here, and also Sue Ball and Kevin Flag. Amazing. In my over 30 years of working in labor nationally, regionally, and locally, I've never had a bargaining unit impress me as much as this local. My first meeting with them was a membership meeting right here in this room, before work, in person, and well over 50 people came. Every meeting we've held over the last eight months has had at least 60% of our members in attendance. In my experience, 20% is considered a good turnout. I've rarely worked with a group that is so engaged, smart, and passionate about their union and their work. I could always count on them being responsive, giving their opinions, and when necessary, disagreeing strongly and respectfully. That is the reason I took on this project. This bargaining unit does all the jobs that keep Prosper performing and succeeding at an incredibly high level. Their core knowledge of this organization is astounding, and it made my job much easier. It's been a true pleasure to work with them, even through a very difficult bargaining process. What made this process difficult, which we pointed out at the table over and over, is a misalignment between what Prosper Portland states are its values and their actions and words at the bargaining table. For example, Prosper's put a lot of effort into the intentional recruitment of BIPOC employees, and has created an incredibly diverse and skilled workforce. However, primarily because of housing costs, many of those employees live far away from this work site. When we talked about the impact that requiring more days in the office would have, especially on BIPOC workers, because of the longer required commute, it was given little weight. I have bargained many contracts and worked with lots of management teams. What I experienced on the other side of this bargaining table was organizational leadership who talked about being collaborative but put in little effort. Another example, we had multiple conversations about the heavy workloads required of employees, but our suggestions and ideas were never seriously discussed. Our team spent many hours presenting creative solutions that our members and coworkers prioritized, but those attempts met with seeming indifference. Our ongoing concern is that time and effort are not being put into how Prosper Portland will retain this valuable and diverse workforce, given the lack of commitment that would address the employees' needs and support the organization's values. We finished bargaining six weeks ago and reluctantly told our members to support the contract, because we did as much as we could, and it was the best we could get at this point in time. We know that Prosper Portland had more to give, but unfortunately, they were not willing to move with us towards shared interests. My hope for the future of Prosper Portland and the amazing work that is done here is that your organizational leadership will join with union leadership, excuse me, and members to be an active part of decision-making to create positive impacts for the workers and our community. Thank you.
Any more comments? Okay. How about any comments from our board?
I think that, I always think that contracts end, and sometimes they end with both sides being very, very happy, and sometimes they don't, in my experience. I do feel like the Labor Management Committee is a place to actually work through these if you want to get to interest-based bargaining. That is actually a lot of time and effort and energy. And so I, I'm hoping that as we move forward here, if that's our goal, is to get to interest-based bargaining, all of that level of effort that has to go in, not only in the Labor Management Committee, but in the training and implementation of the contract, is how you're going to get there. And so, and I think that there are lots of resources to help you get to a good labor management partnership, because I think oftentimes what I can see is we can say we want to have interest-based bargaining, but we don't put in the work ahead of time to get there. And then when we get to the table, those, both of, both sides are already entrenched because we haven't done the work in between. So I just want to say, like, I think it's good, and I approve this contract, and the workers voted for it, but I feel like if that work doesn't happen, we're going to be in this place again next time around. So just thinking about that, and I think thinking about that as part of the workload of the agency, and how that gets incorporated into the day-to-day and workload of the agency is how you're going to get to an interest-based table. Is sort of my two cents on all of that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I would just say thanks to everybody for your hard work on this, and I'm really happy that it's been resolved, and I just hope that the next round will be better and that we'll be able to repair some of these rifts. And really appreciate everybody's hard work, because I know it's, it was not, it was not fun, I know. So, so congratulations. Yeah. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7574?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Seven?
Second.
Second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Okay. We're finally down to our last item. This is an Item 17, an action item, adopting hiring, hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives for the Prosper Portland Executive Director Recruitment. And Hope is going to start us off.
That's right. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham, you know, this board action is bittersweet. Kimberly has given 13 years of service to Prosper Portland, leading us through so much transition so successfully. And, you know, you have an incredible opportunity at the port for you and your family, and we wish you all the best in that. But you have also, at the same time, left us some work to do. And so we have to roll up our sleeves here and get to work and find someone who won't be able to fill these shoes, but who will be able to lead us forward into the next stage of our work. So in that vein, the action, I don't know if you have the PowerPoint ready, the action before you today is to sort of lay the groundwork for us being able to find this, this new person. So, next slide, Justin, I think. So first what I'll do is I'll go through the context of what this action is and the process requirements, some historical background. And then we'll do a discussion of what the board priorities may be for the next Executive Director, which Chair Cruz will lead. And then we'll kind of go back to the action before you, which is to approve the basic JD and the salary range, et cetera. And I think as Justin just mentioned to you, maybe a good time to do public comment would be after this first section on context before the discussion, so the comment can inform that discussion.
That's great.
Okay. Great. Okay. There's a next slide. Okay. Next slide. We all know who I'm in. Okay. So what I want to hit here is that the hiring, the firing, and the compensation of both an interim and a permanent Executive Director is a board decision. It must be approved by a vote of this board. There's no other approvals necessary, there's no other procedural requirements that apply from our charter or state law. This is a, you know, a decision that rests with this body. So, and the idea is that if the board approves these hiring procedures and standards and criteria today, then you've laid the groundwork in the public meeting law to convene future meetings of the board in executive session. So, you know, this is important so that you can, you know, discuss freely what, what you're seeing in the candidates, but also gives the candidates the opportunity to remain anonymous if they're, you know, depending on where their current job is. Okay. Next slide, I think. So as part of this process, you know, and once we adopt, if you approve this resolution today, we will be able to convene an executive session. And I just want you to keep that in mind as this process unfolds, because, you know, remember that all your emails, all your texts, all your written records, recordings, even call logs, calendar appointments, all of those things are public records and probably must be disclosed in response to a public record request. Also, in between meetings of the board, whether they're open or in executive session, be aware of the public meeting requirements, that, you know, even emails with three or more of you on them will be considered a public meeting. And public meetings, as we know, they have to be noticed and minutes taken and in public unless it's an executive session. And then also, a new state law that went into effect in, in response to litigation is the idea of a serial public meeting. So, you know, be aware that if one of you meets with one of you, and then meets with another and says, "We talked about this at this meeting," that can be a serial public meeting, even a serial public meeting by email. So I won't bore you with all of this, I tend to nerd out on it, but we'll just keep these requirements in mind. Let's see. Next slide. So here, we'd like to provide just some historical context for how Prosper Portland has recruited for the Executive Director the last two times. In 2011, you'll see it was a very, you know, condensed internal, internally-focused process. They only considered internal candidates, and the way that the interview process was held, it was just one-on-one interviews with the Board Chair at the time, Chair Andrews and Mayor Adams. And these folks consulted with the outgoing Executive Director and the board members, but those interviews were held, you know, in that one-on-one context. And I think the, the key considerations, the reason the process was set up that way, was there was urgency around implementing the 2009 Economic Development Strategy, and they just really were valuing continuity and a quick filling of this role at that time. So in 2016, in contrast, it was a more deliberate, inclusive process that involved a natural, a national search with an executive recruitment firm. There were multiple rounds of interviews. The first round, the recruiting firm screened and proposed the candidates to the Prosper HR Director, Board Chair Kelly, and the city liaison between Prosper Portland with the mayor's office. In round two, there were seven candidates that advanced, and they interviewed with roughly nine external and internal stakeholders. And then in round three, the candidates, the finalists, met with the board as a whole, and also the outgoing mayor, the incoming mayor, and the General Counsel at the time. And I understand that, once the interviews took place, the mayor, incoming and outgoing, left the room and the board deliberated. And at that time, the considerations were the implementation of the 2015 strategic plan, and just having, you know, this inclusive, thoughtful, transparent process where the full board was able to make the decision with, you know, input from the city. Next slide. So here, we've kind of mocked up a schedule that's based on the 2016 example, you know, not a more inclusive process, but gives you some alternatives. And maybe perhaps during your discussion, you'll want to come back to this, but I'll go through it kind of quickly. So here we are today at August 28th. You have a decision before you in terms of whether you'd like to recruit for the executive search form, executive search firm, you know, do an RFP and go through that procurement process, or to use the existing HR consulting capacity that we have under contract right now. So if we do the recruitment, there'll be a delay in getting the search firm started and, and launching that. So we could start in September with the existing contract, probably would be more like October, November, December for that work with the procurement. In the meantime, Kimberly, your last day is September 27th, so we'll need to ask the board to appoint an interim ED September 18th, because that person will need to assume responsibilities on Monday, September 30th. And then you can see, there needs to be about six weeks from the launch of the process for the recruitment firm to, you know, a bare minimum of six weeks to find the candidate, candidates for round one interviews. We could do those interviews in early November, do the final interviews in an executive session in December, whether at the regular board meeting or separately scheduled one. And then this would queue up the ability to approve the hiring of a new Executive Director in December. And again, if we recruited for a firm, that schedule would just be delayed, as shown in Example B. So, next slide. Right. So before the board discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions about the slide I just gave, or if not, we can maybe do public testimony.
I have a question about the slide. Can you back up one? So the recruitment firm under contract, is that the recruitment firm that you use to fill current positions, open positions at Prosper? Or is that...
We have, we have a firm under contract because we currently have a vacant HR Director position, as well as an HR consultant position. So they've been providing some existing interim capacity for us, and we could add this to their scope.
Got it. Got it. I just wanted to make sure we currently have an existing firm. And you've had somebody just had, I think we've had heard two testimonies where staff have been recruited to come to Prosper. We have the most diverse staff, a very talented staff. Has that been the same recruiting firm?
We've never, I don't think we've used them for recruitments.
So they are leading, so the firm that we have under contract right now has been with us since early January. And they helped with both the collective bargaining agreement, but also all of our recruitments. And so they have two different functions. One is like an official recruiting firm function. And we are using that function for the HR director recruiting process. And then otherwise, it's more of like a traditional process whereby we are posting it, but they're leading that process for us.
Okay, great. And they've done these previous ones. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Does anybody have any questions? Great, that was very helpful. Thank you. Excellent.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we have some testimony. So we'll do that, and then that will help sort of inform our discussion. So maybe, since we have three folks, maybe we'll have them all come up. Sound okay? Yes. So Angelica Rivas, if you'd like to come up, would be great. Jan Mason, and we have Faith Aiken too, so. And then... Yes, and we have Duncan Wang on Zoom. So who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Thank you.
Chair Cruz and fellow commissioners, for the record, my name is Angelica Rivas. I'm a development manager with Andre, and I'm testifying on behalf of my boss, Anilei Halava, the founder of Andre. Andre is an equity-centered real estate development company that develops mixed-use developments, affordable homes, and facilities for mission-driven organizations. The company creates social, environmental, and economic benefits for Black, Indigenous, and other communities of color. I understand there are some in the business community that say that Prosper should go back to the good old days and focus solely on real estate projects that are not centered in shared economic prosperity goals. And then there are others that say we should concentrate on social equity goals at the expense of realizing built projects. I would propose that we have the ability to do both in the great city of Portland. How? By partnering with, supporting, and sufficiently funding equity-centered real estate development projects with economic development objectives. As you consider who the next executive director of Prosper will be, please consider the following. One, operations experience. Experience to structure the organization for effectiveness by hiring talent with real estate transaction experience and talent with experience in delivering economic development initiatives and social equity goals. Two, risk-taking and entrepreneurial. An individual who will be empowered to act with intention and purpose on delivering measurable economic development outcomes in addition to real estate projects that advance our collective, shared economic goals. This means minimizing bureaucracy and encouraging innovation. Three, partnership building. Ability to make effective partnerships with the private, nonprofit, academic, and philanthropic sectors. This person is a collaborator, team player, and innovator who can break down government silos and ineffectualness. And four, accountability. To deliver on promises to communities, specifically communities of color, who have been economically disadvantaged and marginalized due to historic and ongoing actions by the city. I do not believe that the person needs to have real estate development experience, but they need to know enough about economic development, real estate financing, and/or how effective government can work to put the right people in place to get transactions and initiatives done at all levels. The person should be a good leader, direct and transparent communicator, and an individual that can empower their staff to maximize their skills and talents. Most of all, the person has to believe and be passionate about social equity outcomes because this is not something you can learn on the job while leading in this area. I look forward to meeting you during your September board meeting. Thank you for your consideration and your service to the community.
Very much.
Thank you, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. For the record, I am Jan Mason, and I've been working in Portland for 25 years. I currently serve as the board chair for the Greater Portland Economic Development District. I'm an associate principal with Mackenzie, where I also serve as Director of Communications. Okay, is that better? It's on. Okay.
Great.
That's so ironic, as the Director of Communications and equitable development, something I'm always telling others. And pardon, seeing for the presentation for a first time and as well as I might go off script a little bit here. I might mention that I am also the successor to Kimberly Branham at the GPED, and I'm grateful to her as well and her leadership, as well as the advice over the year. And I appreciate that. I'm also part of the Governor's Racial Justice Council and co-chair for the Committee of Economic Opportunity. And so have been in community with Prosper Portland with many hats, as well as being the co-chair for the Community Economic Coalition, which is a coalition of the Black American Chamber, the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber, the Northwest Native Chamber, and the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce. We've done a lot of work together under Kimberly's leadership and excited about this opportunity. As you think about your recruitment and process, the person that we want to bring onboard for the city and for advancement needs to be familiar with this equitable economic strategies, an inclusive way of doing it. It is a topic that has really only started to come up in print form in the last few years, but Portland has been doing it for over a decade. And I am appreciative of this search and thoughtful approach. And I urge the commission to think about some regional comprehensive economic development strategies that we have followed as development of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is our region's plan for five years. In that plan, there are three core pillars. One is to grow our GDP. Our region must be locally connected and globally inspired to build wealth mobility. The next ED should be familiar with emerging technologies and market sectors that encourage entrepreneurial development as well as scaling small and mid-sized firms, recognizing that equitable economic development has a mix of company sizes. Secondly, equitable economic development is a commitment to inclusive engagement. Our next ED should have experience and a track record in promoting equitable practices, engaging with diverse communities, and working with businesses of all sizes, whether that's working with marginalized business owners or partnering with small and mid-sized or large corporations. Third core pillar is structuring for resilience. The next ED will need to be a change agent, ensuring that those impacted and key community leaders are engaged and informed and as we prepare for additional changes, structural changes that are happening through the city government that will occur in 2025. We do not want to go backwards. We want to encourage transparency and support for creating an inclusive workplace culture as well as an equitable economy for all Portlanders. While improvements have been made, we want to do better and work towards especially a process and selection that is inclusive and equitable. Grounding your work on collaboration while building consensus and partnering within, as well as with external relationships, will give us the best economic outcomes for Prosper Portland as well as all Portlanders and set us up for future readiness. Thank you for this time, and I just want to add, that's off script, is that having gone through a selection process with a nonprofit in selecting an ED, I found it invaluable working with a third party outside HR consultant. It really helped give us good feedback and helped us to remove the emotions out of that and really have a really great selection process. And I strongly encourage it after going through that experience myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening again. Chair Cruz, Director Branham, and Commissioners, I am here in my capacity again as the President of AFSMI Local Chapter 3769, which represents 68 positions at Prosper Portland. I appreciate that the topic is on the agenda this evening and hearing the agency timeline and priorities in finding a new executive director. You will undoubtedly seek to hire someone with knowledge of our complex city structure, experience working with commercial developers, community organizations, and business owners. I trust that you will prioritize a leader who maintains a commitment to racial equity and pursuing a future Portland that considers our most impacted communities. I also ask that you pursue a leader that has tried and experienced in leading organizations with labor unions. You've heard a lot today from a lot of my highly competent and capable colleagues. My colleagues are whip-smart, thoughtful with technical expertise, and are savvy, social, and emotionally intelligent. We need a leader who can work collaboratively with our workforce while maintaining important political and business relationships. I want to publicly and personally commend Director Branham for the ways you have led and served at our agency. I've worked a lot with you, Kimberly, over the years. You've led with a combination of strength and softness that is remarkable. You have undoubtedly heard countless requests, complaints, and demands from this workforce. I have often been one of the loudest buzzing bees in your ear. And we're able to keep buzzing because you've made the invitation to do work differently and more equitably. With that invitation, I know that we have demanded a lot of you. We've pushed you hard because you've led the organization well. We're ready to continue pushing. And as we pursue new leadership, I am ready to lead our union to a more collaborative and transparent relationship. I'd like to make a direct request to the board. Invite us, prioritize us in the recruitment of our new leader. We are skilled and thoughtful and ready to get behind a leader who knows that an organization is the most successful when its staff are engaged and invested. We want to be at the table, at the interviews, and a partner in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Duncan, you're on video there. Are you, can you hear me? We can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Can you hear me? No. There he is again.
Try again, Duncan. You were very faint.
Okay, can you...
Oh, we can hear you now.
Oh, great. Okay, great. Well, my notes. Well, good evening, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Branham. My name is Duncan Huang, and I'm here today with Apano and weighing in on the recruitment for a Prosper Portland executive director. My organization, and I have had a longstanding partnership with Prosper Portland. We're part of an inclusive business resource network, and we manage the Jade District, which is a neighbor to Prosperity Network Partner. Together, we've really made lives better for so many of our program participants. And I've also had the honor of serving as a co-chair of the Prosper Portland Budget Advisory Committee for a number of years. And this year, I also served on the Steering Committee for the East Portland TIF Steering Committee. So I want to start by first recognizing the journey that this agency has gone on over the past decade. It's been a real joy and pleasure to work with the Prosper Portland staff and leadership. So kudos to this board for leading Prosper in a new direction that centers community outcomes, particularly in the most economically disadvantaged areas in our city and community. And you all were a lifeline for so many folks throughout the pandemic. And I know how hard the staff worked throughout this time. So hats off to Director Branham and the whole Prosper team. And as we all know, we're now in a time of transition, both at the city of Portland in general and also at Prosper Portland. So I think it's absolutely critical to keep this momentum going and double down on the commitments we've made to the community and to equity. And as you heard and discussed earlier, we just completed a TIF exploration process where staff worked with community partners throughout East Portland to talk about outcomes, acreage, and process. At the end of the day, I was pleasantly surprised to see nearly unanimous support from the Steering Committee. And we now know that the coming months are critical as this goes to City Council. And I really feel like we need an interim leader that was part of that process, that can bring those expectations to City Council. So I gently recommend the Prosper Board appoint someone in the interim role that was part of that process and is currently on staff. As you all begin to work for hiring a new permanent director, I'd also like to make sure that community voices are represented. I have the honor to serve on the Community Advisory Hiring Committee that brought on Director Branham eight years ago, where I served alongside stakeholders from the community, from the business community, and other bureaus. I believe we should continue that model and practice. It was an inclusive process, and we got it right last time, and I hope we can do it again. And of course, I want to thank Director Branham for the steadfast leadership and leadership over the past eight years. So Prosper Portland is at a crossroads, and we want to make sure that the gains we've made over the past decade aren't lost and that Prosper continues to evolve into the Economic Development Agency that is outcomes-driven, results-oriented, and grounded in our shared racial equity goals. And with that, I want to thank you for your time and excited to be part of this process. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Really appreciate the comments. That's great. Thanks to everybody for your testimony. And I think it really sets up our discussion well. This is, of course, a huge decision for all of us and for our city. You know, there are some big shoes to fill here. Kimberly's done an amazing job and just couldn't be more appreciative of everything she's done for the last eight years. And I feel grateful for having the privilege of being board chair for that period. And it's just been, it's been amazing. So, you know, I'm even a little emotional about it. I don't want to lose her. But anyway, but we have to do what we have to do. So for the last week or more, there's been a lot of stuff going on, a lot of discussions about how to tee all this up. I think our introduction by Hope went really well. I thought that kind of laid things out for the board well. And so now we have the opportunity to kind of discuss some of the substance of this. And then going forward, we can have more discussions. We can schedule some executive sessions, additional executive sessions if we need to. There's lots of stuff we can do. Like Duncan, I participated in the last hiring round for this position, and I did think the process went pretty well. But, you know, there's opportunities to change it, make it more inclusive or more focused, more targeted, however we want to look at it as a board. We actually have a lot of flexibility, I think, because it's our call. So, discussion question number one. We know the next executive director needs to lead the organization and work with partners as we implement Advance Portland and to ensure the agency's financial stability through a time of great change for the city. What are the key priorities they need to tackle in the next three to five years? So I'm hoping folks have thought about that a little bit. You know, I do think Advance Portland and financial stability are huge for this agency. You know, in the past, we spent a lot of time on the Financial Sustainability Plan, which was aimed at addressing the changes in TIF. And of course, you know, the TIF cliff. And then Advance Portland, you know, was our most recent effort to look at strategic issues. And, you know, we adopted that last year, so it's still pretty fresh. But, you know, our changes are... But, but, you know, our changes, our city changes constantly and is constantly evolving. So if there are new priorities that folks think we need to address, I think that would be great. We can talk about that. I have a few ideas, too. Anybody want to start?
I can start.
Great.
I would love to make sure that, I think Anyalay made a really good point, that she touched on the importance of being able to manage the relationships within the city and with other agencies and with community groups. And that is incredibly important, and the community engagement is incredibly important. I think it's also important for whoever we select next to be able to continue to move forward the major agenda items through the noise. I think there are a lot of people with a lot of opinions and a lot of wants, and we cannot be an agency that tries to please everybody. I think that will prevent us from being able to make the big moves that have a big impact in a positive way for our city. So I guess that was a pretty broad thing to say, but I think what we may want to look for if we were going to get brass tacks about criteria is someone who has experience leading through, you know, complex politics and complex constituent bases. I also think that even if the person does not have direct real estate experience, it's really important that they have experience overseeing the redevelopment of very large projects, because we have a number of them. We have some that we don't even talk about, like, we don't talk about Zidel Yars right now, and that is an opportunity for Portland. So I think it's really important that we bring in someone who has a proven track record of being able to move those initiatives forward. And we also have a huge portfolio, and Lisa will probably correct me, but it's something like 50-odd properties plus of all different sorts that we need to manage. So again, even if that person doesn't have the expertise themselves, they need to know how to oversee a team who does.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was going to go on to the next one, so.
No, no, I was just going to say, any priorities, though, that, Marcelline, any priorities that you would add?
I mean, I think, kind of building on that, I think the challenge for the next Executive Director is that we are both a city in transition, and so we are transitioning from a pandemic into what comes next. We're transitioning in our form of city governance. We are transitioning, you know, an Executive Director who has, you know, built an incredibly strong foundation. But in some other respects, we're also a bit sort of at a ground level with all these new TIF districts that we're introducing. And so I would say that, you know, an ideal candidate should, you know, have experience in managing, you know, governance transitions, you know, organizational transitions, but also have experience building something from the ground up. Because I think, you know, if the next ED lasts eight years, you know, in their new role, that's eight years into a 34, you know, it's a quarter of the way through the next, you know, set of TIF plans. And really, within that, I think specifically, soft skills or qualities is ambition. I think if we play it safe for the next eight years, we might miss out on opportunities because of the legwork that has gotten us here to this point that we're at today. So I think it's someone that can manage that interplay between change, but also be, and again, I think the word entrepreneurial was said earlier, someone that can be an entrepreneur in this mindset and leverage resources that may be coming from, you know, federal agencies or federal government to really amplify all the groundwork that Executive Director Branham and her team have brought us to this point today.
I think, I think the, sort of, to answer the project, I agree on the TIF implementation. Obviously, I think that that's really critical over the next three to five years. I also think a lot of the transformation that Prosper is leading in collaboration with the city on the revitalization of downtown is, I think, very critical and is not necessarily spelled out in one of those plans. And I think the small business initiatives are really important if we're going to sort of redo the sort of economic development of our city and what our city looks like. And so those programs that Prosper's engaged in right now, along with the other things, like, right, the big, you know, there are three moonshot projects, as people like to call them, but fundamentally, it's the day-to-day grind work that actually does the sort of transformation of a city. And so I want someone with an entrepreneurial spirit, but I don't want someone who's chasing moonshots all of the time. And so I think the other piece to me is, that's really important, I feel like. So those are the sort of, the key priorities over the next three to five years. My second thing on the hard and soft skills, I think we heard from some of the public testimony that I thought was really well done and very well laid out, what we're looking for. I think having somebody who is collaborative with the workforce to get the best possible outcomes we can. I think having somebody who, I do feel like with the government transitions we're having, we need somebody who fundamentally understands how government works and how to draw down and maximize government dollars from multiple areas. And I feel like, and can, and does have some private sector experience to me in working with the private sector, but I actually think the vast majority of these funds are going to come from government entities. And so if you can have all the private sector experience in the world, and if you can't get a dollar out of the federal government, I'm really not that interested, frankly, because the federal government has trillions of dollars that I would like to have here. So, and especially as we overlay these districts, right? So we've got the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, which I think, plus these TIF districts on the affordable housing, plus the Portland Bond on the affordable housing, plus the lift money that the state has just done. And if all of those sort of components aren't overlaid strategically throughout the city of Portland, I feel like that's maybe goes back to your first question, right? That's a big project for somebody to sort of figure out. And, you know, I am hopeful that we will have an ex-president who's also interested in investing in affordable housing, right? And interested in doing infrastructure projects in willing cities, and especially on the West Coast. And so being prepared to maximize those dollars, I think, is something that we need to look for in the next three to five years. And, you know, I think COVID was a surprise, but the ARPA funds were also a surprise that came with COVID. And I would like for us to have a plan that if we have a new surprise, that we're ready to implement and use it quickly and effectively. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. And then I think I'd like a little bit more time on the qualities, maybe, that I'm looking for in an Executive Director, but that sort of match up with those, like, three-to-five-year projects.
Gosh, these are great comments, I really think. And on qualities, you know, I was thinking about skills and qualities, that thing. I was thinking about a lot of things that people have already said, change management, you know, vision and leadership, community and political skills, management skills, business and real estate acumen, you know, broad expertise, including government background, and then also a commitment to Portland, you know? I'd really like somebody who, ideally, you know, one of the things that, we had, we had some terrific candidates last time from out of state. They were amazingly talented. And any of them, I think, not, you know, maybe not any of them, but, but they all seemed like they could have succeeded, you know, and done a great job. But one of the really cool things about Kimberly, I have to say, was, you know, she's born and raised in Portland. And I think that, I think we have a kind of a unique perspective, you know, as Portlanders or at least people who've made a commitment here. And so I think that's a nice thing to look for. It's not dispositive. None of these things are dispositive, but I think at least a commitment to Portland and a real, an excitement about our city that we can sense, I think, is really, really important. So.
I think the one thing that I would add that I think is a feature that Kimberly has that I think has been unique is a transparent and fearless communicator. And I think that goes to the fact of all of these interests are going to come for this position, and being very clear where you stand and being fearless in your answers, I think, is a very important skill set that, as Oregonians, sometimes we don't have.
Too nice, in other words.
Too nice. Passive-aggressive. We're not.
Does anybody want to add anything else on question one? All right, so our next one is, which organizations, individuals, sectors, and stakeholders need to be included? So, as you, as we know, lots of folks, I mean, my phone has been ringing off the hook ever since Kimberly made her announcement. There's, there's an intense public interest in this position. So part of the process and part of the way we did it last time was, we tried to weave in folks representing different groups, perspectives into the process so that hopefully, at the end of the day, we kind of had a synthesis and a thread that we could draw on for everybody. So does anybody have any comments about that? I mean, obvious ones, of course, we're going to, going to want community members and different various community groups. We want business groups, real estate, obviously. You know, I've already heard from elected officials, you know, you know, staff and our union, a lot of different perspectives. Anybody want to add anything? Anything else jump to mind?
I mean, I agree with all of that. I think a question that I would ask council or just kind of staff is, how do you do that in such a way that it is appropriate, you know, to kind of narrow the funnel down of candidates as well, so that it's not intrusive? And then also just, you know, we are a small town, and so if you have 12 people that are interviewing, you know, and you're bringing in too many people too early, how do you do so in such a way that, you know, could respect the privacy of people who might have a day job, you know, somewhere else and transitioning? So I think maybe the ask here is more finding a process that can be inclusive and discreet in that. And I will defer to experts who have preceded me in this, but just thinking through, ooh, it's difficult enough to bring in, you know, a single person when you're kind of hiring within an org. How do you do it in the open when in the open might also put that person at risk for their current day job?
Well, that's, that is a really good point. And I think last time, I think the, I think the names weren't public until the very end. And so they were like, the last three were publicly announced. Prior to that, everything was confidential. And the folks who, we had lots of people on interview panels and people, I, sorry, and people, I think, were quite, you know, discreet about participation and not talking too much in a way that might hurt somebody's career. So, you know, we won't, we won't ask for NDAs, but we will have to tell people, and I'm sure our recruiter or whoever's helping us with this will deliver that message, too. Any more thoughts on how we might integrate them?
I think one of the things that I feel like is getting to that funnel effect, frankly, because I think you're right, you can't have, like, 12 people, just as a person who's interviewing for a job, which I haven't done in a long time, but it's scary when you walk in a room and there's 12 or 15 people staring you in the face. So I feel like, I think the recruiter process, how the recruiter sets up, like, one of the things that I've seen recently for hires of, like, the Oregon Health Authority Director, for example, was the recruitment firm called through stakeholders to ask them the questions about what they're looking for in a position that I thought was really important, and then helped us narrow down sort of, and then those got brought back to, like, the Racial Equity Council, which Jan sits on, and there's a discussion there. And that really helped, I feel like, hone some of that and provided that stakeholder input without the candidate.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's definitely part of the due diligence, I think.
Yeah.
And then later, when we get to the interviews, I would expect that we'd actually have people, you know, participate.
Yeah.
And we'd actually have, you know, someone from the chamber or someone from, you know, Hispanic Chamber or whoever, you know, representing whatever particular group.
And then my other suggestion is, I feel like with the, we should ask the union, and I think she might have gone, but I feel like one of the other things I think is important is that the staff have a separate interview. The represented staff have a separate interview with the upcoming Executive Director so that they can ask particular questions that, frankly, I don't want to be engaged in, and that give them an opportunity to sort of hear from the person directly and more.
Yeah, and I can't remember, did we, we did something like that last time, didn't we? Kimberly, did you do that last time?
My recollection, Chair, is that last time, the recruiter had conversations and that there was a process, maybe where the Board Chair had a specific meeting with union representatives as, like, just part of that initial process, and then the union president was part of the panel, the second, like, that, that panel with nine people.
But was, was there a?
There was not, there wasn't anything that was broader. I think the, there was just, there were just those, I mean, again, this is just last time, but there were just those three phases of basically an interview by the recruiter who had interviewed a lot of stakeholders and so was going through kind of just some kind of scorecard that had been informed. And then there was the interview with nine people, including union president. There was a representative for management, representative from the executive team, a board, one board member, a number of community partners, and then that final round. So that was the process last time. And I think they were trying to be inclusive but also maintain confidentiality.
Great.
I also just wanted to say that, and I have learned this through conversations over the last couple of weeks, but the job description is draft form, and my expectation, I think this group's expectation is that community engagement will occur to refine that job description so that everybody is a part of the process of being able to talk about these qualifications and soft and hard skills that we're looking for. So I think that's really important. I didn't, I didn't necessarily understand that initially, so I think it's an important point I just wanted to say out loud.
Absolutely. That's, that's the intent. Yeah.
And I think one other thing to add, because I agree 100%, I think the ideal candidate should also be able to shape, you know, her, his persona into that job description as well. And so I think the draft, you know, certainly should feed from the community groups, but also ultimately, the ideal candidate should be able to shape their, their role.
One last thing on this item. Advance Portland has, I think it's five industry sectors that are named, and I would love to see business leaders from those industry sectors in particular also represented. I know that we focus a lot of our work on small and medium-sized businesses, and it would be great to invite to the table for this process the folks who have been leaders in those sectors as well within our community.
Any other comments on that one? Okay, let's see. Number three, what is important to you as we craft the hiring process and timeline? We already heard from Hope, excuse me, yeah, from Hope, excuse me, on a rough idea of a timeline, two possible options, one being going with our sort of HR consultant who does recruiting and is handling recruiting for us now versus going out for a more broad process with other recruiters. And, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages to both, you know? Someone, I believe it was Jan Mason, was talking about having done prior executive searches and the importance of having an HR consultant and a recruiter. That, that person is very important to us. And I've had the, you know, the pleasure or burden, however you want to look at it, of doing a number of these executive director searches for other nonprofits as well as previously for Prosper. And I can tell you, it makes a huge difference who handles that for us. And so, you know, one of the things I was concerned about was, well, would our current HR consultant have the experience, background, expertise to be able to do it? You know, I did encourage Fisher Slick to speak to, to that person or that group just to see what they could do. Not everybody, you know, has had an opportunity to speak with them, but we could certainly arrange that if folks are concerned about it. You know, I don't know where it fits into our decision-making, because it's not really, you know, in the past, it wasn't a board decision to decide who the recruiter was going to be. But I think it would at least be nice to have some general consensus among, among us as to what we're going to do. So if folks have strong feelings about it, I'd really be interested in what we, what you think.
I kind of have strong feelings that I don't want to spend a bunch of time doing a procurement for a new recruiter when we already have a recruiter who has brought us a good, endurous staff.
I actually feel a little differently. So I think the recruiter is absolutely critical in helping us find the best candidates. And I also think that they are going to be the ones
And I also think that they are going to be the ones to define the experience of that search process and make sure that it's not biased and also reflects the opinions of the community. So, I would rather not rush through the process and make sure that perhaps it is our current HR consultant, but it very well could not be as well. But I think we owe it to the process and also to the organization to at least consider other executive search firms. I'm not opining on whether we actually run an official RFP process or not, but I think we at least owe it to ourselves to look at the qualifications and speak with others. And I've had the chance to speak with some people in our community who have gone through ED searches recently at the state level and also in the city. And they recommended other firms that they've had really positive experiences with as well. So, I would love for this board to have an executive session to discuss that and consider the firms. I'm not opining on the RFP process or proposal process or the, you know, what we're legally required to do, because I don't know what those requirements are, but-
I'm open to an executive session to have that conversation. I think for me, some of the things that you said that, that I agree with, you know, I, I don't think we should rush this, whichever firm that we choose and choose to work with. I think we should spend time trying to find the right exec director. I am mindful of holidays, transition, a city in transition, and, you know, the next 12 weeks might be really, really tricky to achieve everything that we're trying to achieve in a way that feels inclusive. It could be a national search, it could be a regional search, you know, if you've got community input here. I would rather give, defer to giving space and make sure that we create room for voices within reason, but also acknowledge holidays are tricky versus trying to squeeze it all necessarily, you know, by the end of the year. So, I think trying to, that is another balance point, because you can certainly draw it out too long, but I, but I do think we should create, create some space. And, you know, I, between national and regional, as I kind of look at that, or local, right? I mean, I think even if ultimately we wind up with a local candidate, I think we will feel better about them if we considered candidates that weren't necessarily local. You know, we should have someone that stands out, you know, on their merits, whether they're, they're local or not, or it could be someone who's coming back to Portland, right? So, you know, I think, because I do want to place a lot of value on the Portland thread, we have a certain way of doing things here, and that's good in most cases, but it's also great to have perspective, I think, from, from other places as well. So, would be open to expanding the search so that we could potentially get people who have been perhaps in a, like, a moment in time similar to Portland is reflected in their experience somewhere, and that could be in Portland or it could be not.
I agree on a national search.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, I think that, you know, we're incredibly white state, and if we want diversity, we have to do national searches, like, that's just how it is. So, I think on the timeline, I guess on the sort of, my understanding from Hope's presentation is that to hire a new firm, we would have to go out for an RFP because it's a new contract, and that takes a lot of time. I'm not in a rush to fill the position, but I am in a rush to have like a good community process, and I would much rather spend our time on a like very good, robust community process. So, maybe a misunderstanding, the process to, on the recruitment firm.
Well, as far as the, as far as, you know, mandatory to go out with an RFP, I'm not sure about that. We'd have to ask Hope for, for, but on that. You know, so just on, on the balancing point, so, so just my own personal opinion, I'm not, you know, if folks want to stretch it out into the first quarter of next year, I think that's, you know, whatever we have to do to make it work, right? My thinking on it was, we have a lot of things going right now that are high priority at Prosper. I don't think we want to let it go too long, you know, and to your point, if we do have to do a full-blown RFP and all that, it's going to take, it's going to take a long time. Also, I think we have to be realistic about the environment that we're in. You know, City Hall is going to have a big changeover, and needless to say, we, you know, are closely adhered to City Hall, even though we have an independent board, you know, we, you know, we have to recognize that. And I, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'd like to be optimistic, but I have a tinge of pessimism at how all that's going to play out, to have 12 new city council members, a new mayor, a new city administrator, and a whole new structure, and then how that ripples through to what we're trying to do. And I would hate to have all that come in and then delay us another six months or a year, you know? So, so that's, I just want to throw that out there, just as something to, to be worried about and to, and to consider. And that's part of the reason why I was thinking, well, if we can make it, you know, if we can, if we can make it through by the end of the year, that would be ideal. But, you know, maybe, it may not, it may not be doable, you know? We'll just, we'll just have to see. I keep thinking about John Wooden and his quote, you know, which is, you know, be quick, but don't hurry. And I always, I always liked that quote, because that's what I kind of think we need to do, you know, is be quick, but don't hurry and don't rush things in such a way that harms us.
I also feel like the interim, the question, the question around the interim person that we're going to have at our next meeting, I think will help me with the timeline. I agree with you on the changes that are happening at City Hall and just generally in our city. I think the question for me is, I, I guess I don't understand what are, like, what is the legal implications and like meeting that timeline? So, maybe Hope you can go back.
Yeah, I'm happy to step in, thank you. I think the question is, so there's a lot of ways we can design a procurement process. You know, we can go with our existing consulting capacity, we can do sort of what was called an intermediate procurement, where we reach out to three firms and get sort of informal bids, or we can do, you know, a full-blown RFP process. And it's really, I don't know actually what the amount, the cost of this work will be, because it sort of depends on their scope of work. So, we can design it, we can right-size it for what you all want. The, and I'm wondering, like, how much involvement does the board want to have in the selection of the recruitment firm, right? So, we're talking about selecting the, the next ED, but if we also have to, you know, engage in an executive session-
I saw a slide where Tavo did all the work, and I liked that. That was up there.
Well, I think that's the way it worked last time, if you shared it and they said, here are the candidates.
And I would say I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum. I call Tavo all the time. So, with that in mind, you know, I'm sure we'll have more discussion about it, but I, I would definitely want to be involved.
So, so is there a way for us to have like a, you know, I mean, I don't know how to, I don't know how to best do this, but hypothetically, let's say that we had an executive session, say, next week, and we called up a few people that had been referred to us that are, we are, have great reputations, good quality, and maybe we invite them to have a brief presentation with us and give us a feel for their background, what they do, what they've done, the kinds of folks they've had. Not a full-blown proposal, just a get-to-know-you kind of session. Does that create any problems for us? Can we do that?
Why don't, if I may suggest that we have that executive session next week, if we want to pull out calendars and schedule that, and then we can talk, because I don't know if we could arrange the firms that you've talked to and buy next week.
Yeah, well, I don't know either. I'm just saying hypothetically, is that something we could do without setting off all kinds of bells and whistles about notice and-
I don't know if we could, I'll have to look into this, but I don't think that there is an exception that we're allowed to hold a meeting, an executive session, to hire a recruitment firm for the executive director. We're allowed to discuss the hiring of an executive director in executive session, but I don't know if that extends necessarily to the hiring of the firm that will recruit the executive.
Part of the hiring, though.
It is, it is.
Right?
Can I just, sorry, just because, sorry, I recognize that, that-
Thread the needle?
Yeah, sorry, I recognize that it's, like, I'm trying, I don't want to insert myself too much in this, but we also, Hope was out last week when we had this conversation, and we are in this interesting position where we do not have an HR director. So, I just want to be conscious of like, Hope and I and Justin and others are like doing our kind of stuff. So, we asked our, our acting HR director who basically to, and our procurement team, just to walk through what it would look like if you all decided to do that interim process, right, and asked five firms what it would be. And so, that was a, like, basically it adds two or three weeks to the process. So, you could decide tomorrow to have three to five people who are called. Our procurement team, HR team could ask them to, to put proposals together and bring that back to you in the executive session. What, what happened last time was a six to eight-week process because it was a full-blown RFP, and so our procurement team said that you could do something that is shorter, that's more like an interim, but it still needs to be in writing with a scope and a budget from a procurement standpoint, is my understanding.
So, that's, that's procurement. I'm talking about something not rising to that level. I'm talking about something-
That's an interim procurement process.
Okay.
Not an RFP, it's like a, go ahead.
I understand.
Oh, yeah.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is something less than that, something that just, just serves the purpose of kind of informing our board of these, these folks' capabilities in sort of an informal way. If we really like what we hear, then we ask them to provide a proposal along with our existing HR folks and, and then we consider that.
Could I propose?
Is that doable?
Well, maybe add on to that question is like, if there is a way to still lead this with exec session, and then if perhaps two board members wanted to carry that work stream forward, would that make it easier to do that so that you're not running into the public? Because I would be fine recusing myself in effort of having speed, but also inclusivity. So, like, maybe not all five of us need to be part of that interim procurement interview, all the exec search firms, but I trust that two of our board members can come back with, here's our recommendation.
What do you think, Hope?
So, it sounds like it's more of an information gathering executive session.
I was just trying to look for some way to, to kind of shortcut it, that's all.
Right. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
To make sure that can happen in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so if we were to do an executive session next week, would-
I, I also am with the commissioner. I, I feel like I'm really, I actually think I'm not so wed to the like, I'm much more wed to the process than I am to the who implements the process, if that makes sense. So, I don't, and I actually feel like even on the process, I feel like we've given you really clear direction around what we're looking for in the process. And so, I feel like as the board chair and the staff, I feel like, to me, it would be much better if you guys could come back with something than a sort of a, a group project around it, in my thinking, because I am very outcomes-focused as a human being. It's not a good, it's not a good quality of mine, but I'm just going to own it.
I appreciate that.
I think the reason why I'm so focused on it is when recruiters reach out to me, regardless of who the organization they're representing are, if they don't show up well, I'm not interested. And so, in a lot of ways, that organization is kind of the first introduction to the opportunity, and that's why it's so important.
So, okay. Do you want to get back to us? So, what if we, so calendaring-wise, is Tuesday or Wednesday, is Wednesday of next week open like for folks over lunch? Maybe we do lunch hour, executive session, something like that?
I think that'll be fine, yeah. And I can get back to you at that time whether we can do, we can have sort of guest recruitment firms in that executive session, but I'm also hearing perhaps an interest in delegating the outreach to recruitment firms to maybe the two of you. Okay.
I also think we probably have plenty to talk about regardless, so.
I think there should be an executive session next week, and then I think that in parallel, the go forth and find ye recruitment firms has so been-
See what we can get-
Sure.
-in terms of folks showing up. At the very least, we could ask our existing, our person to, a couple of us have already heard from, from them, but we could ask them to maybe participate that day, at the very least, right?
And are you looking for dates right now?
Yeah, what, I was just thinking next Wednesday, maybe over the lunch hour or something.
Um, I am free, not until like 3:30.
3:30, what about you guys?
I don't have, I, I can't move, but I have before.
I can do lunch any day next week except for Monday, and then you had said after 3:00 on Wednesday, I can als, I can do 4:00 PM.
I can also do lunch on Thursday, no?
I could do lunch on Thursday, too.
I could do an early lunch on Thursday.
Great.
What's early lunch?
I have to be on an online meeting at 12:30.
I've got a meeting at 1:00.
11:00 to 12:30?
So, we could do a, we could do like a 11:00 or 11:30 on Thursday.
11:30.
11:30 Thursday.
And would we get more productive time if it was virtual?
Yeah, I was thinking it'd be virtual.
Yeah, that way you don't have to travel either way.
Yeah, that works.
You can just join your next meeting.
Yeah, that's great.
11:30 Thursday is what we'll shoot for, sound okay?
Yeah, I'm glad we could make Pam live her nightmare and live and in real time.
Live, live doodle.
Yeah, thank you.
Then we have to talk to Serena, of course, see what, see about her deal.
Oh, well, that's going to be a real tight shot.
Really? Yeah.
It's been very difficult. I mean, just need to know that.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, and does that break it? Is that, is that meaningful?
Well, I'd love to get her involved, especially since she wasn't here today.
I would agree with, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so, do you guys want to give me a second option?
We could do Wednesday afternoon, I can do that.
Wednesday at 4:00?
Wednesday at 4:00, is that what I heard?
Checking, hold on, going once, going twice. Wednesday 4:00 looks good.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, 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 too soon, spoke too soon.
Uh, Wednesday at 4:00, 11:30 Thursday or Wednesday at 4:00?
And I'm assuming-
Yeah.
Okay.
We might slide over just a little bit more if we have to, but shoot for an hour. Try to be efficient for an hour, yeah. Won't have 19 votes to do.
We got pretty good at that, I thought.
You do that for everything, just right to left.
Okay, all right, I think we have a tentative plan then. What do you think? Does that sound okay?
That sounds great.
Okay, and you'll let us know about-
Yeah, I'll look into the question you asked, for sure.
Okay.
And do we have to take an action today?
We have to take an action today. We have another discussion question, you guys can table that till next week if you want, but-
Yeah. Yes, well, I'll just, let's just go to that really quickly, but, and we, we should, well, I think this really is mostly an executive session kind of discussion-
Yeah.
-because we're actually going to talk about, probably talk about some names and some more specific, with a little more specificity in that conversation. But this is about the interim and the kinds of important things that the interim's going to have to deal with, you know, pronto, and then the kinds of criteria that we're going to be applying to the interim position. So, you guys have probably thought about that already, I've got some ideas. You know, we have issues like, you know, do we go internal, do we go external, advantages, disadvantages of both? How would those things be mitigated? Familiarity with Prosper, the city, you know, leadership skills, history background. Interim, just the interim piece is kind of complicated. So, we should probably talk about that in executive session, but until we get there, we could think about that. If you guys want to talk about it, just, you know, give me a call. We won't have a serial meeting, I promise, Hope. We'll keep it very discreet.
So, so as discussed earlier, this is again laying the groundwork for those executive sessions. The action in front of you is to adopt the hiring standards, basically the job description that will form the basis of hiring the new executive director, recognizing that this resolution gives you the authority to modify it in response to public input and other priorities that you may decide upon. Also, the salary range is part of the job description, and that actually has to be adopted today as part of this action in open session. And I'll just say the salary range that is proposed as part of this recruitment is the salary grade 28, which is Kimberly's existing salary grade and is justified by the class comp study that we recently completed in January. So, we can go through the- So we can go through the EJD a little bit if you'd like. It was attached.
I think we all commented on that-
Okay.
-before, so I don't know that we really need to. So do you guys just want to go ahead and vote then?
Sure.
So let's go ahead and do that. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7575, which includes the job description?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great. Thanks so much, and thanks to everybody for sticking around. And I think that was a really good discussion about kind of get us rolling on this project, which is a big project, so, thank you. All right, this meeting is now adjourned.